To the Monday, October 7th, 2024 meeting of the Fitchburg School Committee, I now call this meeting to order.
I would just like to call for a minute of silence. Maybe you know I was a longtime teacher and principal in the Fitchburg school system. And I lost three friends this past week or so. And just two wonderful teachers and a great administrator, Estelle Sawyer, Maureen McSheehee, and Dawn Cummings. If we could just have a moment of silence to remember those three really outstanding--
Mr. Stevens, could I jump in too? I would add Stephen Morse, who was a great teacher at Fitchburg High School, passed away recently as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right. So on our agenda, we have an executive session that will not occur at the beginning of this meeting. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify yourself for the record by stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, now I ask at this time to place all electronic devices into silent mode. We will now have the salute to the flag, and we'll have committee member Deb Jeffries lead us in that salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have school committee members and student reports. We have school committee chair report. There is none at this time. We have the report of the resource subcommittee.
Resource subcommittee, we met on September 26th. In the resource, we had grants that are going to be submitted and donations that are to be accepted. We had an enrollment update. You should have that in your packet. I think our October 1st is about 104 new students, which is going to be very good for the school system for the coming year. The October 1 enrollment, the funds we get are based on the previous year. So the 104 students that are new this year, we don't receive money for them until next year. So last year, what was it, last year, only seven or eight students that we--
Yeah, it was very small and all, but it was, as you said, 104 student enrollment increase overall, per the most recent enrollment report.
Okay. We went over review of the architectural HBAC, security projects, contract bidding, construction installation on Crocker, Crocker Field, surveillance, South Street Elementary School roof, FHS door freezers, HVAC projects, and the Longo Middle School boiler, FHS solar canopy. Those were for resource committee. Hope I got-- Our two committees kind of run together, so I'll take--
You want to give the report of school building needs?
Yeah. We-- In your packet, you received this past month. I wouldn't go, I won't go through everything that we've done, but--
There's a lot.
Just to give you an idea of what Building Department does every month, the number of little projects that they take care of. A window at Crocker Elementary School had a large crack in it. Advanced glass was called to make the repair. Three projections were hung at McKay before school started. Large holes in asphalt areas at playgrounds. Asbestos tiles being replaced by school building staff. FHS hot water tank leaking. Toilet at Longo Boys Room not attached to the floor. Royal was called to make repair. Doors that were broken. So we get this report every month. It's about three pages of repairs every month that our school building takes care of. We also looked at Crocker Field and how we're going to use it and what we're going to charge for people to use it. That, I think, will be coming to policy soon. Resources is about done with that, and you'll have that. Any questions? Seeing none, okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Policy Subcommittee Report.
Okay, we met September 25th, and we completed Sections F and G. And we are going to meet next with Tracy Novick again from the Mass Association of School Committees on October 23rd from 5:00 to 7:00, and those meetings are held at Central Office.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Student Support Subcommittee Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Student Support Subcommittee met this afternoon at 5:00 PM, and there were two items on our agenda. One of them is, how are we assisting teachers to use data from their formative assessments to make data-driven decisions that would assist them in preparing interventions and assisting students in the area they need helping? And I was introduced to the PLC monthly cycle that are currently used or going to be used. And so teachers can, educators can pay attention to that so that it can help improve teaching and learning. The second thing was, with the decline of funds in our budget, are all teachers provided with the necessary resources to improve their pedagogy and also to improve student achievement? And I was, they shared with us that there was resources purchased that can last for six years. There was, with the funds that we had, they purchased these resources, and those are going to be good for the next six years. I also talk about, because I am very concerned about improving student achievement and helping teachers to be in a position where that can be done. And so I suggested free online resources like Kahoot, you know, as a way of checking student understanding, and teachers are able to monitor, monitor what students are doing. And also, there's another free resource that is a very good one that can help manage discipline, which would be the Apple Classroom, you know, where you can, the teachers can teach your class and don't have to turn your back to the students. They're always facing the students and can walk around. And everything that, all the lessons that teachers are presenting are projected directly on the board behind them, and the students with iPads instead of Chromebooks are able to participate in that and make things easier for teachers and for students. So those are the things that I suggested. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Knight.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments? I have one. What is the, can you expand upon what the resources are that last six years?
Mr. Roach, can you add a little bit more? I just heard about it today, and I don't want to--
Yeah, so over the last three years prior to this school year, we had used the SIR 1, 2, and 3 resource, the additional funds from the federal government for pandemic relief, to really make huge investments in our curriculum products. Eureka Squared, HMH, Into Reading, Into Literature, Open Sci Ed, a number of different social studies materials, amongst many others. You know, the elective areas, the arts areas were supported as well. We knew with SIR 3 ending, literally last week, September 30th, that we had to get-- And so, as an example, last year, about 1.6 million was utilized from SIR 3 to support curriculum investments. Many of those large-scale investments happen on sort of a six-year contract. So you are able to purchase in advance, and it ends up saving our district quite a bit of funds, and you get the entire package of materials. They can be hard copy materials, textbooks, ancillaries, workbooks, other things, but a tremendous amount of online access as well for our students and faculty. So this year, we knew going into 20, what are we, in the 24, 25 school year, that we had to move our curriculum line as its own separate general fund budget. So last year, we presented and proposed a $900,000 curriculum budget that would maintain all the site licenses that we have, but also continue to bolster what we need moving forward for our students. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Could you explain that, how we've encumbered all of our funds, SIR funds and so forth? They're all expanded?
Yeah, so SIR 3 had to be, it had to be encumbered by September 30th. SIR 3 was the largest amount that was issued to Fitchburg, and much of it was going to be utilized for the capital projects. So we've been working on capital projects like HVAC improvements at Memorial, at South Street, in addition to replacing a roof at South Street, and also a big surveillance system project. Those would be the big three that, you know, combined are well over $10 million. All of those had to be under contract and/or completed by September 30th. With the HVAC projects, like many districts were trying to do, because much of that SIR funding was designed to upgrade, you know, facilities that had had a lot of deferred maintenance and that had not had improvements to, especially systems like HVAC systems. They're super expensive. And yet, you know, without even realizing it's kind of the backbone of a building, and if it's not working, you notice it; if it's working, you don't notice it. And so we had to do quite a bit of study, you know. We have to follow the Mass general procurement laws around construction for public buildings. It takes literally a year to get from bringing someone on to design it, which is a legal requirement, to actually going out to bid and finding contractors. It's a good year process. But we were able to get both of the buildings that we wanted to. We really wanted to do three. We had an independent study done of our schools, and three buildings were designated as the most in need, and Memorial and South Street were certainly among those. So that work, which is under contract, will actually start this year and really enter in us over next summer, because we have 17 months to spend. It's going to be about a $7.5 million project, a dollar project for those two buildings. We should get the gold star for spending just about every last dollar of our SIR amount.
We didn't send any back.
No, and a lot of districts have stuck with that problem.
It wasn't easy, because with all of the laws, we had to interview architectural firms and construction companies, and everything took time in the bidding process, so--
Yeah, and HVAC's tough, because every district was trying to do it. And so when we first went out to bid, we had in brown gold included in it, we didn't get any bidders. So we had to tighten, we had to expand the timeline and tighten the process a little bit, and now we have two great HVAC general contractors that I think will transform those two HVAC systems.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay. Any other questions or comments on student support?
Nope. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. Okay. Next, we'll move on to School Personnel Subcommittee. There is no report at this time. And now we'll move on to Student Representatives Report.
Good evening. This week is Homecoming Spirit Week at FHS, and there will be a pep rally at the end of the school day on Friday. At the pep rally, school administrators Mr. Lemmy, Mr. Mazafaro, Mr. Sachoka, Dr. Rintul, and Superintendent Thompson will be pied in the face as a fundraiser for the Class of 2025. The Homecoming Dance is Friday from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and the Homecoming Game is Saturday at 12:00 PM. This Thursday at FHS is also the Hispanic-handed Heritage Month Ceremony.
Tomorrow, October 8th, is the PSAT testing day for juniors, and Wednesday, the 18th, is the SAT testing day for seniors. At Memorial, the first meeting for parents and guardians of Memorial Middle School eighth graders interested in the Washington DC trip will be on Tuesday, October 15th, at 5:30 PM in the auditorium. Goodrich Academy's Open House is on October 17th from 12:30 to 6:00 PM. Also on October 17th from 4:00 to 7:00 is the Health Resource Fair at the Fitchburg Senior Center.
All right, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
On the Spirit Week, what are the topics or the themes for tomorrow, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday?
All right, let me pull that up.
Today was pajama day. I believe tomorrow is Jersey Day?
Yes, tomorrow is Jersey versus New Jersey Day. So you either dress in like a sports jersey, or you dress like you're from New Jersey. On Wednesday, it's Wednesdays, we wear pink. It has a double meaning, one from the movie Mean Girls, and the other to support breast cancer. On Thursday, it's Twin Day. And Friday, since we have the pep rally, it's going to be color wars. So senior, the senior class will wear red, juniors will wear gray, sophomores black, and freshmen will wear white.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have the approval of the minutes from the regular school committee meeting of September 16th.
Make a motion to approve September 16th minute.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain, since I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Very good. One abstention. That passes. All right. Next, we have Communications.
Yep, I can do that.
Yeah, okay, great.
Our first communication this evening is from Judith Perla, the Class of 1964 Reunion Committee. Please come up.
Mr. Thompson, Superintendent of Fitchburg Schools, and this is Ms. Tabitha Greenlee, who is a teacher at Fitchburg High School Music Department, from the Fitchburg High School Alumni Class of 1964. Good evening. My name is Judith Perla. I was the co-chair of the Reunion Committee for the Graduating Class of Fitchburg High School 1964. The Fitchburg Class of 1964 recently held its 60th class reunion. We, the reunion committee, which includes my co-chair, Gail Hacker-Stewart, Thomas Kazanjan, John McIntyre, Dennis Cucchiara, Patricia Hodge-Shabett, John Oringi, Jane Williams-Oringi, Carol McDonough, and Lorraine Broder, and Jerry Moisen. Thank you for allowing us to present a check in the amount of $2,500 to Ms. Tabitha Greenlee for Fitchburg High School Music Department, to only be used for sheet music, instructions, music books, and whatever else the school department needs to succeed. We hope you will vote to accept this contribution tonight for the FHS Music Department. Best regards. And I want to say that we have some school members here with us, reunion members here. Dennis Cucchiara, if you'll stand, please. John Oringi, Jane Williams-Oringi, and Carol McDonough.
Do you mind if we take a picture?
Absolutely. Come on down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't give it to her, I'll lose it, so.
So just to note that the acceptance of that will be on our next school committee meeting agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah, next we have the delegates for the 2024 joint conference.
So each year, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents has a joint meeting on the Cape. This year, it is on November 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th. And Fitchburg needs to approve one delegate to attend and also an alternate. And those are two action items that need to be voted on this evening.
Okay, so that'll come at the action item point?
If you want to vote to take it out of order now, you can. It's up to the committee.
So what is the typical, who is the typical delegate?
Make a motion to take Item 24-418 out of order.
Second. Motion in second to take Action Item 24418, oh, and 24419? Out of order?
Okay.
Very good. We will do that. All approved? Okay. Action Items 24418 and 419 are out of order.
Make a motion, 24418, approve the school committee's nominee, Mr. Peter Stevens, as delegate for the 2024 MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference, November 6th to 9th, 2024.
Motion in second to approve the school committee's nominee as Mr. Peter Stevens as our delegate. Any questions or comments?
Been doing about, that'd be my 15th year, I think.
You've been our main delegate?
Yeah.
All right. That sounds great. Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous?
Regarding Action Item 24419, I am not aware if any other member of the committee is attending the joint conference.
So I will be attending the conference, and I can serve as alternate.
Make a motion, 24419, approve the school committee's nominee, Mayor Samantha Squalia, as the alternate for the 2024 MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference, November 6th to 9th, 2024.
Second.
Motion in second to approve school committee nominee, Mayor Squalia, as alternate for the joint conference. Questions or comments? All in favor? All right, that is unanimous. Thank you that those action items have been acted upon. All right. Now, we will move on to public comment. Public comments of no more than five minutes in length were offered to be submitted to the superintendent via email. Did you receive any comments?
I did not.
Very good. I now invite anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to please approach the podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and you are free to make a public comment of no more than five minutes in length. Oh, and if you could please write your first and last name on the paper for our record. Thank you.
All right. My name is Adam Cordio. I live in Fitchburg. I'm here with the core bargaining team, so that's who is with me right now. Before I start, I just wanted to make one quick comment on the sheet that Dr. Knight held up with the PLC cycle. It looked very familiar to what was presented to us at negotiations, and I just wanted to remind this school committee that that has not been tentatively agreed on yet and is subject to collective bargaining. With that, I would like to state that my name is Adam Cordio. I am president of the Fitchburg Education Association. I'm a Fitchburg High School alumni. I attended Fitchburg Public Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. I have lived in Fitchburg my whole life. I own a house here and pay taxes here, as do many FEA members, which is why we've noticed that the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the business manager, and the HR director, none of them live here or send their kids to Fitchburg Public Schools. But the school committee does. And here you have the opportunity to make huge improvements for the staff and students of the Fitchburg Public Schools. You have the opportunity to push those at South Street to do what's right. If they don't care, you should, because you were elected to care. The FEA and the school committee have been to the table 15 times. The only committee members who have attended in person have been Pete Stevens and the mayor. Are they the only ones that care enough to sit at the table and negotiate our contracts? Bargaining is between the union and the committee. The union has had around 100 silent reps with us at negotiations over the last 15 sessions. Our members care. They have helped us make decisions and counter proposals. Where has the school committee been? Where have you all been? Did you even know that we have already been to 15 bargaining sessions? Is Pete and the mayor even keeping you abreast? If so, then why haven't you told them to settle these contracts? Why haven't you been there? I'm sure you all know that our health care went up 19% this year. Even with the 19% increase, the city is still saying it can't afford to pay for our health care costs and have asked us and other city unions to agree to hire deductibles and copays to be able to afford their poor management of city money. Our checks have gone down this year, not up. How is that even okay? Inflation has skyrocketed, yet instead of raises, we have received reductions. We have been working without a contract since the start of the year. This has been going on for too long. When will this school committee settle this contract? At least we have a mayor who finally comes. We all know the last mayor didn't. Thank you, Mayor Squalia, for at least showing up. But I wonder where your priorities are. You stick up for lots of things, but the schools don't appear to be one of them. I saw a video of you and your assistant showing off new pavement on some back road to Burbank Hospital that the ambulances don't even use. You two are like Lightning McQueen and Mater from Disney's Cars, getting all excited over fresh asphalt. Have you seen the section of Arnhow Farm Road that leads to the high school? It's nothing to get excited about, especially when over 1,500 people travel back and forth over that road during the day. We invite other communities to our schools for sports and other events, and that's the road they have to travel? It's riddled with craters and potholes filled with tar, and it's a disgrace. There's not even proper wheelchair curb access at the high school. The kids with special needs can't even get out properly during a fire drill. That's the impression this city gives? That they don't care? Well, that's the impression our members have been getting from bargaining sessions, that your administration won't put the schools first for the students and families in Fitchburg. The school committee has made some strong agreements to union proposals so far, such as creating a sick bank that all our members can access. Thank you for that. But you've also stalled on very important priorities for our membership, including refusing to grant paid holidays to our parent educators, who continue to earn less than a livable wage, and to provide modern and humane parental leave, a proposal that is cost-neutral to the district, but should be a basic right to our members.
Mr. Cordio, your time is up. If you could please wrap it up.
You propose cutting the workday for clerical by half an hour while expecting the same amount of daily work to get done. How about you agree to pay them for lunch, like every other unit that gets paid a lunch break? Most of our clerical work during lunch, works during lunch anyway. Why not pay them for their time instead of taking time away? On top of trying to cut the clerical day, you want to increase the school day by a half an hour. Have you even asked anyone in this community how they feel about that? We have, and the answer's been no way. Our teachers and students have said, no way. What happens if the school day is extended by a half an hour and the secretary's day...
Your time has expired, sir. Please, wrap it up. Thank you.
Our teachers?
Yep.
I'm Bria Hanson, I'm a teacher at South Street. Our teachers and students have said, no way. What happens if the school day is extended by a half hour and the secretary's day is cut by a half hour, and no one is manning the main offices, especially when they don't have a clear plan for the extra 30 minutes and you've rejected our demands for 30 minutes of recess for elementary schools? How does that even make sense? I haven't been able to figure that out. Can you? For those reasons, we are here to ask you, mayor, to be the leader we need and for this committee to prioritize funding our schools. We were able to secure signatures from 85% of our membership in a few days.
Thank you.
So this is the petition that 85% of our members have signed.
A name?
Kim Rodriguez.
Thank you.
I teach at Memorial. This is my 26th year in the district. To Mayor Squallia, Chair of the Fitchburg School Committee, and the elected school committee members, we, the undersigned, demand that you work with the members of the Fitchburg Education Association to settle fair contracts for all Fitchburg Education Association members to enable educators to best meet the needs of our students. The Fitchburg Education Association demands a fair contract that includes improved pay for education support professionals, adequate cost of living adjustments for all educators to recruit and retain educators, strong parental leave policies that keep up with our neighboring communities, reasonable limits to educators' caseloads and equitable class sizes, which will enable us to provide the best possible support for our students, improved safety protocols to ensure all students have access to healthy and safe learning environments, and 30 minutes of recess for all elementary students and 20 minutes for all middle school students. It is time for Fitchburg's elected leaders to properly invest in our school system and in turn, in our students' futures. We appreciate the school committee's involvement in the bargaining process, and we encourage more school committee members to participate. The city continues to fund our schools at the bare minimum required under the law, despite increased funding from the Student Opportunity Act. The mayor and school committee have not been transparent in their use of funds, and many questions remain regarding how Fitchburg allocates its free cash and various other financial resources. It is the school committee's fiscal responsibility to advocate for better funding from the city as a whole, and this includes all committee members, even though only two have attended negotiation sessions. We urge you, Mayor Squallia, and the rest of the committee, to work with us to create the best possible Fitchburg Public School. We encourage you to take this opportunity to support us in providing the students of Fitchburg the excellent education that they do deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Justi Devola. I am a lifelong Fitchburg resident, and I am a secretary at South Street Early Learning Center. I am also a mother of four children ages eight, six, six, and four. Being their mother is the most important impactful job I have. As their advocate, I am here this evening because I reject the proposal to extend the school day. My boys get on the bus at 8:30 a.m. and don't get in my car until 3:30. We then pick up my daughter from my mother's house and get home at 3:45. They have one hour of play and free time before sitting down for dinner. At 5:30, we're back out the door to get to a street hockey game or practice. We don't get back home till almost 7:30 p.m. At that point, it's showers, snack, and bedtime. From the time they get home, they only have one hour of free time. I remind you, they are eight, six, six, and four. I can only imagine what our days will look like when they are in high school and involved in more things. We live in a society where we strive for perfection. We have an immense pressure to do everything and be everything. We have to work and go to school full-time. Our children are expected to play a sport or be involved in extracurricular activities. We are supposed to eat three well-balanced meals a day and get eight hours of sleep a night. Let's not forget the most important thing, which is our family and friends. How are we supposed to maintain thriving relationships when the district wants to own the time that we do have? There aren't enough hours in the day to accomplish everything. Eventually, both parents and students will experience burnout, excuse me, which affects our mental health and leads to absenteeism. I don't know about anyone else in this room, but I can attest that as a parent, I have experienced burnout the last school year. I'm home alone in the evenings because my husband works the second shift. It's just me carting my kids around every night of the week. Instead of increasing the day, you should focus on the quality of the environment. At South Street, admin and guidance spend most of their day responding to different students who are disruptive, unsafe, and even assaultive. Classrooms have had to be evacuated to better contain these students. Extending the day will only exacerbate these behaviors. Your focus should be on how to better support these students and their families. You should also have competitive wages so that we have more people who want to come work for our district. When our schools are fully staffed, we can better support our students and classroom teachers. All this to say that we all need more balanced lives and safer spaces to learn. When those two things are in place, children will develop a love for learning that in turn will lead to academic success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Ouhich. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. I'm not a public speaker by any means. The first thing I want to address is the idea of extending the day by 30 minutes. Doing that cuts into all the extracurricular activities for our students, our high school students in particular, who want to have after-school jobs, driving lessons, sports opportunities, community and passion projects, which they could potentially earn scholarships for. Both of my sons are involved in more than one sport. My son Asa has been working since last school year to get a youth laureate program started in this city to help combat illiteracy. Neurodivergent students will struggle with that extra 30 minutes. One of my daughters has ADHD, and her medication wears off as the day goes on. I absolutely feel extending her day would set her up for failure. In middle and high school, there is no more recess for these kids to expend the energy that builds up for them. Extending the day 30 minutes with no time carved out for kids to have some physical activity will only exacerbate the struggle to focus and stay on task. We need to invest in better curriculums, expand access to dual enrollments for our high achieving high school students. We need better behavioral support services for families with high-risk or violent students. We need accountability and consequences for those students who completely disregard rules and conduct expectations, especially those students who are downright abusive to teachers, school staff, bus drivers, and fellow students. We need an environment where students and faculty feel safe to work and study. We need more transparency. School districts and administrators should be able to tell parents of victimized students what steps were taken to help their child feel safe and the problems student taken away from them. Our students, teachers, and staff should feel confident that they will be supported and protected. We need better strategies and support to help the students who are struggling to keep up. We need to expand access to special education curriculums that reach our students who are severely behind. A sixth-grade student shouldn't be performing at a second-grade level and continue to move along in the system or need to qualify for an IEP to legally force a district to provide that extra help beyond Title I that is needed. It is unacceptable in setting them up for a snowball effect of being severely behind their peers and affecting their higher education prospects. We need school buildings that are in good repair and safe for our students and faculty. I was shocked to see the condition of Memorial Middle School. Classrooms with very poor ventilation, so hot it was difficult to stay in them for more than a couple of minutes to meet our students' teachers. So many areas in disrepair, even my son, a senior at the high school who is a Memorial alum, was taken aback at the state of the building. We have rodent and other pest issues and varying levels of disrepair in our schools throughout the district. We need to invest in our educators, not view them as a burden. We lose so many great teachers and administrators to other districts because they can't afford to continue to work in this district that doesn't value them. Unless this district starts to invest in their well-being and ability to provide for their needs, many of our current new hire teachers will eventually leave this district as well, and I can't blame them. Our educators are not machines. They are people with needs. For some of our teachers and school staff, their salary is the only salary coming into their households. Some of our educators have to hold down a second or even third job to make it able for them to care for their families. And yet, they still pour themselves into our kids and into their classrooms. Please allow me just a little more time to talk about the problem with changing health insurance companies. Mr. Thompson and Mr. Roach and several teachers that are in here, sorry. They know what our family went through two years ago. It was because of, um, sorry. You guys know more than anyone on this committee what my family went through two years ago. If we didn't have access to the amazing health care coverage in a Blue Cross/Blue Shield PPO, we would still be underwater from the medical bills. Yes, having a top-tier health care plan is costly. We pay a lot of our own money to have access to that PPO.
Your time has expired. If you can wrap it up.
I'm almost done. I just lost my place, I'm sorry. The point is that we had the ability to choose that PPO and to take on that cost, and my husband's employer kept his side or their side of the contract and paid for their percentage of that contract. We don't like to think about it, but the worst-case scenario can happen to anyone at any time. I never thought in a million years that one of my children would be diagnosed with leukemia, but here we are. I know very intimately, having access to comprehensive health care and a health care insurance plan can make the difference between life and death based on what insurance companies provide or deny coverage for. So when I saw Mrs. Thibodeau pleading at this podium to not take away Blue Cross/Blue Shield health care benefits, I knew I had to speak on this. We need to put people's needs over the city's pockets. As a daughter of an MDS nurse, I know exactly how ugly and inhumane insurance companies can be. As a mother of a cancer survivor, I have a deep understanding of how an insurance company refusing to provide coverage directly affects a person's prognosis.
Thank you, Michelle.
I have seen it time and time again.
Your time has expired, please.
I have one more sentence.
One more sentence?
Yep. I have seen it time and time again in the support group that I'm a part of, because of the level of health care coverages that parents had access to. Please do not take that access away from our educators.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shelby Goven, and I live at 31 Ash Street in Fitchburg. I have lived in Fitchburg my whole life. I graduated from Fitchburg High School, class of '93, along with my husband Todd. We purchased our home in Fitchburg and raised our two boys in Fitchburg. Our oldest son graduated from FHS last year, class of 2024, and our youngest son will graduate in June as part of the class of 2025. Fitchburg is my home. I love this city, I live here, I volunteer in Fitchburg, and I work in Fitchburg. I have been a middle school educator for 26 years. I work tirelessly each and every year to share my love of science with 11-13-year-olds. I love my job. It can be challenging and exhausting, but the joys of being a teacher outweigh those challenges. I could not see myself doing any other job than that of a middle school science teacher. I am invested in Fitchburg, and it's time for the Fitchburg School Committee to invest in its educators. Teachers come to school each and every day for their kids. We plan, prep, teach, and care for our kids because we love this job. We spend our own money on our classrooms, and we take work home with us on nights and weekends. We don't teach for the fame, the glory, or to live the lifestyles of the rich and famous, but we do want to be respected, and we do deserve fair wages and a contract that reflects that we are respected and valued as educators. At our most recent negotiations, a proposal was brought to the FEA from the Fitchburg School Committee requiring that teachers document how we are spending our prep time. This proposal is extremely disrespectful to all educators. We are professionals, and we deserve to be treated as such. Asking teachers to account for each and every minute of our prep time sends a clear message that the Fitchburg School Committee does not view educators as professionals and that we are not respected by the Fitchburg School Committee. The Fitchburg School Committee has also proposed that teachers work an additional 30 minutes each day, but their wage proposal does not reflect this additional time. We have also not been given a clear answer about what this 30 additional minutes added to our day would look like. Asking teachers to work more hours without conveying a clear vision for how this time will be used and without fair compensation for this additional time sends a clear message that the Fitchburg School Committee does not view educators as professionals and that we are not respected by the Fitchburg School Committee. Teachers are constantly reminded about the importance of practicing self-care, but the Fitchburg School Committee proposal says not during the hours of 7:00 to 3:00. Teachers are being asked every year to do more each day, but instead of taking some things off our plate, the proposal adds 30 more minutes to our day without additional compensation for this additional work time. Educators in Fitchburg have been working for 29 days without a contract. It's time for the mayor and the Fitchburg School Committee to bargain in good faith with the FEA. It's time for the Fitchburg School Committee to invest in its educators. Educators in Fitchburg deserve to be treated with respect, and we deserve a fair contract now.
Hello, my name is Gretchen Gruber, and I live in Winchandon. I'm a Title I reading teacher at McKay Elementary. I began my teaching career in my hometown back in 1990. I taught there for 13 years. In 2003, I had the opportunity to come to Fitchburg to continue my role as a literacy coordinator in a new district facing new challenges and new opportunities. Now, I am in my 35th year of teaching, my final year. I am very proud of what I've accomplished with my students, the teachers I have coached, and the professional development that I have provided. That said, I have placed the needs of my students in my career as a whole as a high priority, but often at my own expense. Like so many of my colleagues, even to this day, I have spent thousands of my own dollars supplying my classroom with essentials, essentials that were not to be bought by the district in times of financial stress or... in times of financial stress or simply because the answer was no. I spent my own money for the benefit of my students' learning environments. Like so many of my colleagues, I came in on days where I was really sick and really needing to be home, but I had a sense of urgency about coming to work and doing my job. After having rotator cuff surgery just a few years ago, I was supposed to stay home for two to three months to fully recover safely, but I didn't. I came to McKay five days after my surgery and continued to the work the rest of the year, even leading a professional development on the day I returned back from my surgery. Now, so very disappointingly, the district does not want to financially recognize that upon retirement. Teachers have made sacrifice and came in when they were sick and didn't use all of their sick-day allotment annually. They refuse to consider a sick-day buyback. How about FPS offer a partial one? The district right up the road does. They recognize that a teacher's commitment to good attendance and rewards it. North Middlesex Regional offers their teachers of 20-plus years, that's me, a sick-day buyback of $50 for each day of only 100 sick days accumulated sickly for a maximum of $5,000. This seems to be a fair, reasonable benefit for teachers who have so many times come in sick when it really would have been just as easy to call out. Good teacher attendance reduces the financial burden of finding substitutes, which we know and has been a glaring issue in Pittsburgh and is still being negotiated how to handle that in our contract. Like so many of my colleagues, I have spent hours upon hours working outside of the school day and throughout the summer for the benefit of FPS. As a literacy coach, I worked with my coaching team on curriculum work during many summers, far exceeding the hours of the stipend, and you know this, John, because we told you about this, but knew that the job needed to be done, so we did the work for free. I've spent many hours scanning grade tests until late in the evening. I've spent many hours with teachers before and after school. I've spent hours organizing and adding to our bookrooms, which are now demolished. I even donated many of my own books that I personally purchased over the years to add to those bookrooms for the benefits of students, all of which now are gone. Like so many of my colleagues, I endured the three years of our contract where there was a 0% cost of living adjustment. In those tight financial times in the district, we teachers did all we could to keep things going, to keep teachers employed, sacrificing improvements in our salaries to prevent layoffs. We sacrificed our own families' financial situations for the benefit of the district. The teachers have always borne the brunt of the 0% contracts. Now is an opportunity to, Pittsburgh, to make that right. This increase truly needs to be equitable for teachers across all steps of the contract. For those of us who have been in the district eight or more years, who also endured three years of 0%, our steps should increase at the same percentage as our colleagues at step 1 through 7 and not less. This percentage of increase on steps in 8 and 9 matter to me terribly. This is my last increase I will receive, which I will figure into the final number for my retirement. Put yourself in my shoes for a minute. Wouldn't you want the same? I have been a dedicated FPS employee for 22 years, who always, always had a sense of urgency about the importance of doing my best for Pittsburgh kids. It is my hope that the district negotiating team shows the same dedication, and I know I'm out of time, and urgency to its teachers now. The time is now to offer a financial compensation and retirement benefit that is respectable and more equitable. A financial package that shows the district is putting their money where their mouth is when they say they respect and value the work we do each and every day. This contract negotiation needs to come to a conclusion. We deserve it.
My name is Mary Del Tergo. I have been a resident of Pittsburgh for the past 30 years and a teacher in the Pittsburgh Public Schools for the past 34 years. This is also my 35th year. I am here to speak to the current salary and extra 30-minute proposal. As a veteran teacher, I am very angry that you are saying that I am only worth a 3% increase as a student teacher who has only been in the district for one to four years is worth 5.65%. I am currently only making $10,000 more than a teacher who's only been teaching for four years in this district. That doesn't even cover what I had to pay personally to get my master's degree. Not only is this disrespectful to those of us who have dedicated our teaching careers to Pittsburgh Public Schools, but it is also divisive between new and veteran staff. I understand the need to attract new staff, but as it can be seen in the turnover rate, you are not keeping them. This is not a matter of greed on my part. In my 10-plus contract years, I have gone multiple years at 0% or 1%. It is time to value the educators that have remained devoted to this Pittsburgh Public Schools. I respectfully ask that you show that by giving us all the 5.65% or more. And then to the proposal of an extra half hour, the extra 30 minutes with our current school schedule, sorry, let me do that. With our current school schedule, it's been very difficult just to make appointments that don't interfere with the school day. If we add another half hour to our day, it's going to be almost impossible to make medical appointments, which will then lead to more teacher and student absences. Thank you for your time.
My name is Samantha Atkins, and I'm in my second year of teaching 6th grade English at Longchamp Middle School. Being new to the district and being young, I have a bit of a different perspective than others who have spoken today. I have just started my teaching career, and already I cannot imagine doing anything else. The district makes it a bit hard in that aspect. I wanted to speak today to discuss a few of the challenges that many of us face as educators and share my personal story. As a second-year teacher here in Pittsburgh, I was very observant last year as I was trying to soak everything in, get advice from anybody I could, and all the help. That was perfect with all of my colleagues. My team was absolutely amazing. My mentor was absolutely amazing. It depended on who I asked. The help is there, you just have to find the right people. When new teachers come in, it's hard when you can't just ask anybody. So, I saw my colleagues struggle with having little to no support in their classrooms, and I did as well. I had a special education teacher last year, but she did not work the full five days a week, and she was often pulled to sub if someone on my team was out. I am lucky enough this year to have an amazing special education teacher with me, but I'm having to adapt as I did not always have help last year. So, in my first year of teaching, I had to learn things one way, and I'm now having to change it in my second. I also did not and still do not have an ESL support in my classroom, which is okay this year as I don't have many ESL students. But last year, I had a student who barely spoke English, and he could not write or read in English or Spanish, and I was still expected to teach that student with very little help as a first-year teacher. As did my colleagues, some of which who have no support in their room at all. It is just them each day. Luckily, we found ways to be able to teach them effectively, but it was an extra struggle on top of our regular daily struggles, which often included behavioral issues with certain students, that as many times as you try to ask for help and as much classroom management skills as you can have, there are some students that just will not have it. We do what we can for them, but it is still a chronic issue that feels like it just applies a new Band-Aid each day. On top of the struggles I face at work, I also face struggles at home. I am 24, and I live with my boyfriend and his parents, which is something we are incredibly grateful for. However, as we're trying to hopefully move out of his parents' house and get our own place and further our life together, we found that it is almost impossible for us to do so. I personally live in Clinton now, and I cannot afford to live there if it's not with his parents. Even though it is not feasible for us to live in Pittsburgh based on where he works as a teacher as well, in Maynard, we couldn't really afford to live in this city either. We're both teachers, and he makes more than I do, as my lane change was denied for this year. I was originally told that I did not have enough credits in my master's to apply for the lane change and to apply later. It was pushed off enough that by the time anyone got back to me, even when I called, it was past the deadline, and even though I had attempted to apply before, I was still denied. So I am now, as of yesterday, someone that has their master's degree but is still getting paid only for a bachelor's. With both of our salaries, it is nearly impossible for us to afford a house, and it is even a stretch to get an apartment. As some of you may know, some of you may not, in many cities, a mortgage is just about as much as apartment rent. We really cannot afford either. While it is not really feasible for us to live in incredibly low income to be able to move out, that might be our only option if we choose to leave. Currently, we are planning on staying with his parents at least till the end of the school year, but if our finances do not change, we are kind of stuck, and it is a very real possibility that one of us gets a second job. While we're also young and thinking of children, we cannot imagine even being able to afford that if we can't afford to move out. That being said, we're both going to have student loans kick in. Even while living with his parents, based on my current wage here in Pittsburgh, I will be drowning with my student loans, and I went to a state school with a scholarship. I know, my time's almost up. It is getting difficult for people in this school system with one salary, never mind two, to further their lives in any aspect with what we make now, because as we know, this world runs on money. All we are asking for is enough money to be able to afford our basic lives while we try to change the lives of the future, and a little more support as we do our best to do so. In theory, it does not seem like that much to ask for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Carolyn Gendron, and I have been a teacher in this district for several years. I hope I'm a familiar face to you all as I go to many school and district-based community events. I have been a silent rep during negotiations, as well as the mayor's daughter's teacher for two classes last year. I'm asking you all to work with our bargaining team to fairly make schools safer for staff and students. I know that a considerable number of teachers in the Pittsburgh Public Schools workforce have been affected by unsafe working conditions, for example, myself. Two years ago, I was assaulted by students at my school and was out of work for two months as a result. I suffered permanent nerve damage to my right arm, and I do not have function of it, and I never will again. I had to go through intense and brutal physical therapy sessions several times a week for hours on end to get to where I could somewhat function as an adult. I'm in pain, but why? Is it due to the kids who admin, excuse me? Is it due to kids who admin say were, quote, "just horsing around," and that it was a freak accident? Is it due to administrators who don't believe you when you say that this is not safe and not okay? I want you to think about your everyday lives and your activities. Think about continuous pain that you could be going through, just writing on the board for your students. Are you even cooking dinner for your family? No one should have to fear having permanent damage being done to their bodies from just going to work. I am begging you to bargain fairly. Thank you for listening.
It's there. Okay.
I'm a 7th grade special ed teacher at Longchamp. I wish there were actually words to convey the emotions that I feel. It's week six, or honestly, I'm not even sure, and I've already had the thought, how much longer can I do this? We're running on empty and being picked and micromanaged on a daily basis, but we're not getting what we're asking for. I'm 31 years old in my ninth year of teaching, and last year, I had to make a life-changing decision and decided to call off my wedding. I had to upheave my life with no plan, only to be laid off the next week, even because I didn't have the right math license or didn't have the right license, but when I called Desi, they told me I was fine in the position actually that I was under. My other two licenses and my master's degree and my SEI endorsement all covered it, but I was still laid off because of what? Anyway, I'm getting off task. I got laid off the very next week. Thankfully, I was able to return under one of my other licenses, but I'm now struggling to pay rent on my own. I cannot even imagine how somebody with a family, pair of educators with a family, are expected to live right now. It shouldn't be this hard to keep a job that is this hard, that requires so much of our heart. I shouldn't have to start looking for a second job. I love teaching, or I loved it at a point, but the lack of respect is too much. Thank you.
Richard Bastine, I live in Ashburnham. I think I have a unique perspective tonight, and I'm just amazed with the powerful stories that we have here tonight. And I can assure you, as I'm a 7th grade science teacher now at Longchamp, there's 800 more powerful stories behind me. Every person in this school district cares and loves their students, and I know that you love them too. I've grown up in Pittsburgh, and I'm standing here today. 1991, I was senior class vice president, graduating in 1992, and the union was working without a contract. And myself, my fellow students, we went to Memorial, and we begged the school committee, "Please take care of our teachers. They work so hard for us." And here I am today, listening and thinking, I'm on the opposite side now. I'm the educator. I'm looking out for my students, and I care about them very, very much. And it's very simple. As I think today, back to 1991, cost of gas was $0.89. $3 today. Cost of milk was $1 roughly. It's over $4 today. The average teacher today makes less money, adjusted for inflation, than they did five years ago, than they did 10 years ago, than they did 20 years ago, than they did 30 years ago. So 3%, 4%, 5% might sound reasonable, but the power to make that decision is with you. You have the power to end this tonight, tomorrow, next week, and invest in our students and invest in our teachers. Thank you.
I'm Melissa Deslitz. I live in Pittsburgh. I teach at Crocker. But tonight, I'm reading for Jessica Clark, who is a teacher at Selfstreet. There seems to be a huge disconnect between the school committee and the educators. We educators are working with large class sizes, lack of adequate substitutes, staff, and support, all while meeting greater and greater challenges due to the adverse experiences and trauma that our students face and bring with them to school every day. Our kids need and deserve more educators who are respected and paid fairly, not more outside demands made on the educators already working our hardest. We do not feel respected by the way these negotiations have played out. We educators are the ones who are on the front lines of education. We know what is needed for our students and schools to be successful, and we are We know what is needed for our students and schools to be successful and we are not going to, we are not being heard or treated fairly. You should be asking us what we need and what you can do to help us. You should be coming into our classrooms as volunteers to see what it's like day to day instead of telling us we need to do more. Listen to our experiences, respect our experiences and our years of dedication and service to Pittsburgh. Hear our voices. Create solutions that are fair for us so that we can support Pittsburgh's youth in the best way possible moving forward into the future.
Hi, guys. I know you remember me from last year for doing our presentations on our plant grant, so I did want to start off with some good news because I know tonight's been pretty rough. With that said, some good news. We have some compost bins that were donated from the DPW. I've been in contact with the science director on working on purchasing soil and bug spray. We are working with Patricia Vorfield at Goodrich Academy to try to do some cross-school collaboration. I am tentatively slated to help out at Pittsburgh High School with their water towers for the November PD and the shed at Reingold that has been sitting idle for the last year has finally been built.
Can you just please state your name?
Yes, Matt Knoll, sorry.
Thank you.
However, unfortunately, I do have bad news to deliver about that grant as well, which ties into why we're all here tonight. So number one, as of a week ago, $0 have been allocated for this from the district. Zero. I have spent more money out of pocket and more time than anybody else. $0 in stipends have been created. As you all sat here and told me last year the importance of this project and creating money for teachers to want to do this, not $1 has been given for that so far. The 2023 and 24 school year, I did everything on my own, including these presentations, for free. Asking someone to store the materials, I asked my principal last year for help as I changed classrooms. The principal told me that she was going to throw out all of the materials. I actually intended and recommended that we bring some of you into the fold to help troubleshoot. The conversation ended there. And finally, when all the equipment was moved, my personal possessions and the equipment that was purchased were either damaged or destroyed out of revenge and retribution. Now luckily, this was done by an interim principal who not only was unqualified for the position, but she's gone now, so we don't have to worry about that anymore. However, this person, if she was left in charge, would have thrown out all the equipment that we used to grow those plants for you last year when we brought those meals. Why am I bringing that up? Well, here's the thing. I'm not working for free as neither anybody should, right? With that said though, when I was hired by superintendent Adam Renda, I was brought in. I asked, he, he said, "Do you have any questions for us?" And I said, "Why did you want to speak to me?" And they said, "Because of your military background that we thought you would be a good candidate coming into this school and help shape things up." I wasn't even compensated for my military experience. I've asked questions, why? I still haven't gotten answers. So with that said, because I needed to make more money, I started working last year in December, the breakfast shift at our school because there was a very important need for safety. There were only two staff on duty at the time and from 8:15 to 8:45, 250 to 300 students come into the cafeteria. We were approved and the positions went from two to four. However, this year, we've been reduced back down to two due to funding. With that said, I did the math. It would take about $7,000 or $8,000 to fund those two positions for the rest of the year. However, apparently, we don't have it. So hopefully, nothing bad happens during breakfast at Reingold because there's a strong chance that there's not going to be an adult there to attend to the problem. With that said, there have been a whole bunch of other problems that tie into the safety of breakfast. Just last week, I had to throw numerous adults who had wandered into the building and into the cafeteria without anybody noticing or seeing it. The final parent that I went up to didn't even say a word to her and she looked at me and said, "I know, I'm not supposed to be here." This is the type of safety protocols and violations that are happening on the daily. We are told to do more with less. By the way, that same principal, six days after I came and presented and brought everybody here meals in February, I was written up for calling the office because staff wasn't coming to do their duty and showing up on time. I sent an email to a specialist asking that students not be allowed to wander the school and come back into classrooms unsupervised or during teachers' prep periods. I was reprimanded for that too. So, safety. Well, here's the thing. I'm a combat veteran. These are the things that I've experienced in my time at Reingold. I've been punched, kicked, spit on, scratched, sworn at, and somehow it was my fault. Children climb into drop-top ceilings with asbestos. Teachers don't want to go in the sick room or the cancer room. I don't think any job should have a room called the cancer room, but we do. Classes that read temperatures of over 100 degrees. Teachers expected to pay out of pocket to buy fans to keep themselves cool. Students smash laptops, they rip heating panels off the wall. Who pays for that? And best of all, students come in and tell us, "My mom said she's gonna get you fired." The teacher that was told that last year is gone. We've lost two staff members already this year and there are a number more ready to quit. I know it's all about money, the almighty dollar. I'm here because of safety. Please do not let money get in the way of having good staff walk away. Please do not let money be the reason that a horrible accident occurs. If anybody in here remembers Jeremiah Oliver, that started at Reingold. These are the type of problems that we're trying to suss out. Please work with us. We are all on the same team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to make a public comment?
Hi, my name is Sue Mitchell. I'm a Pittsburgh resident taxpayer. I'm a mother of a child in a Pittsburgh school and I'm a substitute at one of the schools in Pittsburgh. I have come to Mr. Thompson and Mary Ann, sorry, Mary.
Mary Alexander.
Mary, I'm Mary, my girl Mary. I came to her and I told her about the safety concerns and I told John Thompson about the safety concerns I had for my child at a previous Pittsburgh school. They told me that they could help me if I promised that, you know, I could get my kid to school and I said, "No problem." I have, that's the only choice I have. So I have now been at McKay as not only a substitute but also a parent. I am a substitute. I come in every day, don't know where I'm gonna be, don't know who I'm gonna be, don't know who the kids are gonna be that I'll have. It's a very diversified position and I thrive on that fast-paced environment. I have been coming to these meetings. I've been coming to these meetings because the people that I work with, I see the work they put in every day. I see the struggles they have. The amount of kids in the room is outrageous and for them to have to also think in multiple languages for children that are ESL, it's intense to watch. So I just try to be as supportive as I can to them, but unfortunately, I'm also in grad school. So next week is gonna be my last week at McKay as I start an internship and I, I don't want to leave because I waited for these contracts to come through, so many meetings. I thought, well, I'm gonna leave, but don't worry because it's gonna be all set. They're gonna fight, they're gonna get it and I'm just here, as I said, as a taxpayer, a resident for eight years, a mother, a student, a teacher. Please, please let these, let these negotiations end and do the right thing. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that wishes to make a public comment? Seeing none, we will move on in our agenda. Well, I believe we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
All right. The first item on the agenda for the superintendent's report is Carolyn Gendron. Carolyn's here still? Oh, okay. Come on up. Sorry about that. To talk about Washington DC, we have two members of our staff, Ms. Scott, and I'm gonna butcher your last name, but Mrs., Ms. Carnabucci?
Yay!
I did it.
Very Italian.
Thank you.
Yeah, so again, my name is Michelle Scott. I teach math at Longscho Middle School.
I'm Sarah Carnabucci and I teach eighth grade science at Memorial Middle School.
So for the past couple of years, Sarah and I, along with a couple of their teachers, have been organizing and coordinating the eighth grade Washington DC trip. So last year, we took 143 eighth graders from Longscho and Memorial to Washington DC. We had an amazing time. No issues, no concerns. The kids were excellent and we do really appreciate the school committee's support in allowing us to take the trip with our students.
We're also really proud of our students. They, for the past couple of years, specifically, this moment sticks out to me at the baseball game, they were actually appalled at behavior of other schools and were picking up their trash in the stadiums. So you would be really proud that our students represent us very well while we're on this trip.
So this year, our plan is to hopefully take another, potentially 150 students to Washington DC. We're starting that planning and organizing now. We've met with Mr. Roche a little bit on some finances and things. We do have our first parent meeting next week at Memorial for any parents and students or guardians interested in their eighth grader attending the trip. At that meeting, we will also be giving our families our first fundraiser. So we do want to speak a little bit to the finances, which I'll let Sarah do for our trip this year, but before we get into that, we do want to present you with a picture of our trip from last year as a thank you for your support from last year.
Oh, look at that.
No, I didn't get one.
Oh, I have extras, so if you need that.
Yeah, my daughter hid it from me.
Awesome. Do you want, you guys want to see?
Pass it over.
I saw, I saw, I saw the very first one.
I still have mine.
All right. So just to talk a little bit about financing, we have been very fortunate the past two years that school committee and central office has supported us so much with this trip and covered the cost of buses. We know that came from the SRF funds. We met with Mr. Roche about that. So this year, the cost without covering buses will be 958 per student, which is a huge difference from the past years.
Specifically, $242 increase for our families if the district does not pay for busing. So that's a huge.
Yeah, it's definitely a huge expense. We do have a lot of fundraising planned and we know that with the costs being higher this year, we are trying to think of some other ones. We met with Mr. Roche about doing the GoFan. We actually had some teachers at Memorial offer to auction off some of their items that they have, like signed playing cards from different sports, things like that. So we're definitely in the works with more fundraisers than we've done in the past. We have the Cookie Dough fundraiser, the popcorn fundraiser, we do penny wars. So we do a variety of individual fundraisers that go directly to their trip and then we also do school-wide that we split up evenly among students to try and help those who may not have as much like networking for their individual ones.
Yeah, so I know like the purpose of us being here today obviously is for asking the school committee if we can go forward with planning our trip for this year.
And that's action item 24420.
I think when we started, it was $125.
I wish.
And we, we sold Hebert candy bars.
I sold He.
Yeah, and kids earned money to take the trip with them. They earned extra.
Yes.
Quick question.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, so with approximately 150 students and then chaperones and nurses, how many buses do you need?
So it would be three buses. They're $10,900 each, so a total of $32,700 for all three. So that is just based off of like the 150 all going. Last year, we did need three buses because we had the 143 students. The year before, it was our first year back, we only had two buses. We had about 100 students, so it was really great to see an increase in students going. And we are hoping that even with the cost increase, we still have as much interest, but it's definitely a concern of ours for our students.
So the action item tonight is just to give them permission to continue planning the trip for.
We could move to take 24420 out of order?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Motion in second to take 24420 out of order. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Okay, it is before us.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to allow the eighth grade middle school coordinators to plan a trip to Washington DC in 2025.
Second.
Motion in second to approve 24420. Any questions or comments? All, all in favor? That's unanimous. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, when do you need to come back so we don't forget to give you the final approval? Because last year, I think we almost forgot.
We can come every time. It's okay. You'll hear from us.
What do you have to do it by?
Towards the end.
Like April?
I think so, like April, May.
All right.
Can I ask a question too? When do you, I, I heard that you have a meeting, a planning meeting with, with interested students' parents. When do you have to notify them of the total cost? Is it at that meeting?
So we are planning, our capital tours did send us packets. Yes, they actually came through the mail today and those packets have the increased cost of 958. We do anticipate a ton of questions around that, so if there's anything that we can do at that meeting, I'm, I'm just afraid that we're gonna say that number and they're immediately gonna, you know, kind of tune us out, you know? It's, it's a big number. It would be $958 that we're going to be telling.
Without any assistance.
Yes. It would be $716 per student if the three buses were covered, if all three.
How much again, say what I'm saying?
716.
And the total for the buses was $32,700 for the three?
Yep.
All right, let us see what we can do and we'll get back to you.
And can you share fundraisers, share the fundraisers with us?
Oh, absolutely. Yep.
Absolutely.
What, what's the, the date and time and place of next week's meeting?
It'll be at 5:30 on Tuesday, the 15th at Memorial Middle School Auditorium. And we do it for both schools all together because even though we're two separate schools, we travel together, we plan the trip together, so.
October 15th, 5:30 Memorial.
Yep.
Can we attend?
Oh, of course.
Of course. We welcome it. We urge it.
Reiterate with the mayor that if you can let us know about fundraisers.
So the one that we will be handing out on the 15th is our Cookie Dough fundraiser. If you love frozen cookie dough, I highly recommend the Snickerdoodle. You know, it's really, really good. So that will.
They're pre-portioned.
Yeah, they're. They're pre-portioned. They all come in on a big truck one random day in December for parents to pick up and start delivering frozen cookie dough and pies and all types of fun things.
Yeah, let us know because we do really care about kids.
Yes, absolutely.
I just, you, you made a statement after coming back, did you, was it, was this trip interrupted for a few years?
Yes, because of COVID.
COVID.
So they didn't go for a few years. So two years ago was our first year bringing the trip back after.
I really am grateful to you for making that effort.
We love it. It's great.
We started the '85, '86 school year.
Oh, wow.
And I'm very grateful, oh, sorry. I'm very grateful that you include all the students. I see a diversity of students represented there. I hope that that's gonna happen, you know, for the next trip also. Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just had one, one more comment, dear.
One more question.
I think you should come back regularly to tell us what your activities are for fundraising. I think you would find consistent help.
Oh, yeah, definitely. And we can, I can add you to my email distribution list and you'll get all of my notifications about fundraisers.
We have a DC Facebook page that Central Office started for us that we post. So if you want to see pictures of the trip too and all the info, we post it there as well.
Yeah, and we do intend to create a GoFan page to make it super easy to make donations with.
Like with Venmo?
Your Apple, yeah, Pay or Venmo, whatever. So that, that athletic director Robbins is gonna help the team get that created.
And keep it in the school newsletters because I like to get those too.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the district accountability results. Can I ask a favor? I have. I have some administrators who have been here for a very long time. It's been a very long day for them. Would you be okay if I pushed my presentation, the district accountability results to later and asked South Street and Pittsburgh High to go first?
Always.
For me, so we can get them home, so they can go home to their families?
Yep.
Thank you. So that being said, we'll invite South Street Early Learning Center up this evening to share out their school improvement plan. So just quickly, as you all know, it's that time of year again, our accountability, accountability data is out in addition to it's time to update our school improvement plans. So this meeting and the next two meetings, that's what will be happening here. Our school principals will be coming to present. So this evening, we have our first set of presentations. We have Hannah Tumber here with her team. Hannah, hand it over to you, and I do have your PowerPoint. Project that for you. Give me one second. Sorry about that. All right. You may begin, Hannah.
Good evening, everybody. Really excited and really proud to share the work that was done last year at South Street Early Learning Center. My name is Hannah Tumber, I am the principal at South Street, and I will let my colleagues introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Novato, I'm the assistant principal at South Street.
Hi, I'm Allison Neely, the SPSA at South Street.
So really excited having Evie here as well this year. South Street just kicked off, we're piloting the Family Institute for Student Success, which is a DUCY initiative, and it's essentially a six-part parent workshop on learning how to navigate the education system. So we're the first school in the state to actually have it start at the age that we have it. It primarily is geared toward, you know, or what has been geared toward high school or middle school. So it's been really interesting working with them to be able to kind of facilitate this for our youngest learners. So it's all about, you know, parent partnerships and really being able to support parents on understanding the education system from the time that they're in kindergarten all the way up through what they need to graduate from high school. Jackie is actually one of the facilitators, so we have it facilitated in a facilitation group in English as well as Spanish. So Jackie is doing the English facilitation, and then Ms. Luisa is doing the Spanish facilitation. So we had a lot of families sign up, and we're hoping to do it again in the spring as well, because we actually didn't, we ran out of spots, so we weren't able to offer it to all of our families that wanted to participate. So we're really proud of that.
And then just to add, they are very active participators within it, so they're not just there, sitting there, they're really motivated to learn, and it's been really quite successful. So Luisa, I've been, I've been really proud of the parent groups that have come. And just a little, we have a panel that we need people to sit on in a couple of weeks, so look for me and Luisa to be reaching out.
All right, and then some of our data points. So this is our ELA growth from last year, so it goes beginning, middle, end of the year. So as you can see at the top, we had about 13% at or above grade level, and then toward the end of the year, we were at 75% performing at grade level or above grade level. So we were really, you know, proud of the results that we had, and we actually did see a total increase from the year prior to this data at the end of last year. So an increase from 22, 23 to 23, 24.
So this says about 75% of our students were ready for first grade, either reading mid or on grade level to early on grade level, correct?
Yes.
We actually had other vice principals and principals call us saying that they found them to be more ready this year. And on the next slide, I'll talk a little bit more of why we think why that's happening.
What is, what is mid?
The middle of the year. So the beginning, the top chart, it's the data at the beginning of the year, then students take the assessment in the middle of the year, which is the middle chart, and then at the bottom is the end of the year.
No, it's, it's as mid or above grade level?
So middle, middle of the grade level, so essentially like later on in the year. Yep.
She just answered my question. Doesn't take much to read my mind in this scene.
So this is our DIBELS data. DIBELS is a short series of tests that test for early literacy skills. They're timed and they're about one minute each, so it's, you know, testing if those students are fluent and they're able to do it quickly and automatically. As you can see, at the beginning of the year, 223 kids were in the red, so they were not at grade level. But by the end of the year, we only had 78 students that were not able to be fluent in their early literacy skills. Something that we like to attest this to is we actually had four Title I teachers last year instead of two, as well as them being highly qualified. So not only are they licensed in the correct areas, but they were provided district training with Orin-Gillingham method, which was extremely important, as well as our teachers and our planning around PLCs and action planning. We really use that data to make strategic groups, and we've been continuing that growth through our PLC work and our common planning work. We've been very successful at that at our grade level. We were all educators more recently, so I think that has a lot to do with it. We've lived it of being spent teachers in Pittsburgh, so I think that's been really important. Our teachers have been working really hard, and we just want to make sure we give them credit where credit is due because you can see it in their, their, their data.
And that's also going with our math growth, our math growth. So we were at 7% at the beginning of the year, and then we went to, again, that's that grade level on or at grade level, and then we went up to 59% by the end of the year. This is using our math curriculum, so that is a 3% jump from the 2022, 23 school year. And also, we're super excited because we were able to actually hire two Title I math teachers this year as well to work on interventions.
I'm sorry, does this, does it mean 7% grade level, like there, if they're in kindergarten, that's their grade level? Or is it mean 7%, they're ready for first grade?
No, at their grade level. That 7% is when they're at their grade level.
So that's what they're coming in.
In as, and then they ended at that 59%.
So our math was a little bit lower, and that's why our focus this year is on the math, aligned with the district's plan, and we were able to add Title I like we did for reading, so we're hoping for better success, because now we're going to have those small groups for them as well. So, and our Title I teams have already been taking groups for two weeks. We did a full sweep for the whole school and was able to get everyone taken in small groups faster.
I'm back.
You're back.
So this is just the overall chart. We average around 89, 90% for all of our subgroups, seeing our students with disabilities at our lowest percentage at 87.5. You know, unfortunately, you do get sick when you're three, four, and five. A lot of those absences are at the beginning of the year. So we saw, after like a lot of work with our guidance counselors and our admin team, the end of the year attendance was much, much better. But unfortunately, that first time at school for many students does result in some absences, especially for our fragile populations. Next one, please. We're already seeing improvements this year with our guidance team already kind of knowing what to do now and how to work with our families. We've already seen improvement. Our nursing team is also really strong, they work with families, when to let them know to be sick, when to be out sick and contagious versus, oh, I'm just going to keep my kid home every day. So they do a lot of work around that with our families, which I think has been really successful as well. And then, we're also talking about attendance at those fifth classes we talked about earlier. Parents weren't even aware there was laws around attendance. So this education we're starting at an early age is incredibly important. We're also teaching them like the graduation requirements, everything there, so again, hopefully we'll reach more parents that way. So that education is like what we're really trying to push at the early childhood level.
Awesome, and then school improvement plan, so this is the third year. Essentially, across the board, we want all of our students to have access to high-quality education. We want them to be able to have their curriculum, we want them to be able to access whatever tiered support they need, so if they need a little bit more of a challenge, if they need a little bit more of a push, or if they need a little bit more support. In addition to that, making sure our teachers are getting professional development, we're having those ongoing partnerships with families, and then we're also utilizing community resources to be able to provide our families opportunities to get what they need to be successful, to be healthy, and, you know, overall, just to have our families succeed. So it's pretty straightforward in terms of the work that we're doing, and we're continuing, you know, to do it, and excited to see where, you know, this year leads us as the third year at, of the Early Learning Center, so.
So just to clarify for myself, the numbers on the first charts, these are, this is, these are all numbers for kindergarten students, correct?
That's correct.
At first, I was thinking it was also pre-K, and I thought the numbers, it's a big jump in enrollment, but it's really only about, about maybe 30 to 40 more students this year than you had at the end of last year, I believe.
This year, we're looking at a significant, so we're, we're at around 400 and, yeah, 412, and we have three more who just, we got pings on today. So our enrollment is significantly higher this year than it was last year, so class sizes are at about 22 right now, leaning, some classes are at 23 as opposed to last year. At this time, we were at like 19 to 20, so we definitely are seeing a big increase in class size numbers.
So I know with a larger class size, it's harder to do as many things as you do. Do you see that as, as a big issue for you this year, as, and it's possible that you may even get more students every week, every month?
Yeah, I think that will probably be the case. You know, I think we kind of take it day by day and challenge by challenge and do what we can. I think we have a lot of conversations as, you know, a staff and as an administrative team about how to best allocate our resources. So I think that we're kind of constantly moving and making those adjustments as we go. So I think, you know, this is the fifth week of school for many of our kids, it's their first time in school, so we're, we're still kind of early on in those stages, but I definitely think we'll have to see a bit of a shift in where our resources lie and how we're best utilizing our, our staff.
We're definitely very grateful to have care professionals in every kindergarten and preschool room without them. You know, teachers would be lost, absolutely, so we appreciate having them in every room. And, you know, they do a lot of our instruction, they're running a lot of those strategic groups as well, so it's, you know, very important to the Early Childhood Center.
Thank you.
Dr. Knight?
Yes, I just want to thank you so much for all that you do for the students in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. But I do have a question, you know, the teaching is very important for our students to continue to improve and, and, you know, show growth in their educational accomplishment. My question is, well, before that, when teachers are, are happy and, and getting what they need, you know, they, they would work harder and they will do the best they can. So my question is, before your teachers get evaluated, are they participating in pre-observation meetings with the, very good before you give them, you know, their feedback and so forth, so that they know what they need to do in order to help improve their scores? Perfect, thank you so much.
Debbie?
Really impressed with you starting that Family Institute for Student Success at this level. And I just think ahead, those parents coming now and learning all this, what it's going to be like as they continue through Pittsburgh. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Allison also had an IEP night with the CPAC at our open house, and they were, that was a huge turnout for that as well, so the parents want the education, especially starting young, so we're trying to provide it as much as we can.
More opportunities we can get the families in, for everyone.
Yeah, we have really good attendance at our family events.
I just want to thank South Street, they did a really great job in the spring, this past spring, making sure kids got, signed up for kindergarten. I think this was the highest year, you know, going into the summer, we had almost a good portion of our kids, I think, what, over 300?
Yeah, we had like 310.
Enrolled already, which usually our numbers are like 200, and they all started enrolling around August, September. The work that the whole team at South Street is doing to really make sure they're doing the outreach and the communication. The enrollment office supported them too, so it was, it was great to, you know, kind of get an idea of who, who we have coming to us earlier this year, so thank you.
And this, this year, we, we changed it from the September cutoff to August, right?
Right.
It was, yeah, that was retroactive last year.
Retroactive last year, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Plus, was, was this the first year that it was online?
Enrollment.
Enrollment was full online, yep.
Ooh, yeah.
So one other question, so when you have students who come in, you know, this week, next week, what information do you have for those students who maybe missed the first five or six weeks of what you're doing? And what, what is it that you can do to help that, those new students blend in with all the other kids who've been together for, since the beginning of the school year?
Yeah, I think fortunately, our teachers are so used to with how transient our population is, that this is kind of a thing every year with kids, so even though it might be in bigger numbers this year, it's something that majority of our teachers are used to. Our teacher retention is pretty strong, we only have a few new teachers, so it's something that majority of our teachers are used to kind of practicing. We also have things like morning meeting in the mornings, which is really around like culture and community building, and that's something that we don't stop at once the beginning of the year, kind of comes to a nut, it's something we continue. We also work hard to, you know, identify peers and classes that can be kind of a good buddy, we're communicating with parents, so they enroll with enrollment, but then the school calls them to give them more information. So it's kind of a lot of different things all at once, but it, it's definitely around, kids are so eager and excited, especially at this age, which is really the best part, I would say, about early childhood. They come in and they're, they're excited to come to school, they're excited to make friends, they might not always be excited to sit down and, you know, like do work and not just play, we've heard that quite a few times today. But, you know, just kind of keeping that, you know, open, welcoming environment.
It's really a team effort, the secretary's help call the parents, the guidance team's waiting for them if they come off the bus, so just a, you know, a big group effort.
Thanks, Ken, appreciate it.
How many of your teachers train responsive classroom? Are you using responsive classroom at all? And you're using morning meeting, but.
Yeah, so all of our teachers up until this year, Kathy Brady did the trainings for responsive classroom.
Say a lot, 80%.
Yeah, so I would say all, but our newest teachers, and then our newest teachers are getting kind of supports, like we're pushing in as administrators, guidance is pushing in to kind of help them.
They still have access to the materials.
Yep.
Is Kathy still working for us doing?
I can definitely respond to that, so actually, there were responsive classroom, you know, components in all of our new teacher orientation. Half of the day was run by our own in-house SEL director, so he really takes on a lot of the responsive classroom work and integrates that into classroom management, setting up your classroom environment, so every single new teacher actually had that professional learning during the summertime.
Hopes and dreams, we do all of that in all of us, pre-K, NK.
Okay, Ryan Gold used to be a training center for responsive classroom.
Kathy still comes to visit us regularly. Kathy Brady still visits us regularly and supports us any way she can.
I was on one of the original.
I was the, in the original, I was one of the original trainers in Pittsburgh.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we used to go out to Greenfield, Chip Woods, training, and they got so, expanded so much, Ryan Gold became a training center for responsive classroom, yeah.
Well, I just love everything you're doing over at the Early Childhood Center. I mean, early learning, early. Early Learning Center, the baby sharks, I mean, it just, it just looks, it's just the cutest school that we have, sorry, other schools.
I think I'd probably agree.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, up next, we have Pittsburgh High School, Dr. Braga with his admin team. Come on up. Set, Dr. Braga.
All right. Good evening, everybody, school committee, superintendent, assistant superintendent, assistant superintendent, Mary Alexander. I'm Dr. Braga, principal of Pittsburgh High School, excited to be here. Joining me here are, is my administrative team, I'll let them introduce themselves.
Matt Lamy, 12th grade assistant principal.
Mark Leacham, the SPSA at the high school.
Rintul, 9th grade assistant principal.
Brian Mazefaro, grade 11, assistant principal.
Dr. Choco, grade 10, assistant principal.
When we came in as a team last year, we, we had a list of plans that we wanted to do, things we wanted to achieve, and we kind of had some, some hope that we brought to the high school. And what's great now coming into year two is we can present some growth, which is great. We have a, a long way to go, you know, to keep it going to where we want it to be, but today, we can present some growth from one year to the next, which is awesome. And this really goes down to everybody at the school, you know, my role, I play a very, very tiny role in, in the school improving. It really goes to the administrative. It really goes to the administrative team behind me, staff, students, teachers, nurse, custodians. Everybody really came together to do this great work at Pittsburgh High School. So I just wanted to start with that and then go into the presentation. So our enrollment, we're a little bit higher than that. We're at about twelve thirty, but that's based on the twenty-three, twenty-four enrollment at about one thousand one hundred and eighty. And here's just some quick highlights. So we partnered, as you know, with the MVP program that was presented here at school committee several times, and we have two groups of students, juniors and seniors, that go back and forth and they learn electrical and carpentry. Students are doing a great job in the program, they're excited about it, families are excited about it. So it's, it's really great to have that opportunity. And now the underclassmen are really talking about it. They're saying, hey, I'm interested in MVP, I want to give it a shot. The other picture is just some of the random field trips that we'll take. Well, not random, but they're specifically focused on college career, and this one is with our partnership with GARA around the college field trip. And just some really quick highlights, we noticed an increase in family attendance at the August new student orientation, which was awesome. And also at our most recent open house, one teacher came by and she said, you know, in all of my years at Pittsburgh High, I've never had these many students at the first open house. So I thought that was pretty awesome.
Dr. Braga, has the construction on the building on Westminster Street, I think it's Westminster Street, has that been utilized yet? Are students in the MVP program able to use it? Are they still working on that building?
They're still working on it now, but they are at the high.
Right, Monty Tech.
Okay. Getting, you know, their classes there.
All right, thank you.
But they should, I think they're hoping to be done by November.
They were thinking November.
Yeah.
Probably.
That means December.
Oh, I went by today and it looks like they were working on a roof today. So I think they were putting the new roof.
The outside looks great.
Yeah, yeah. And the inside looks great too.
It does, yeah. We took a tour.
I don't want to go off on a tangent, but we took some tours this summer there. It's really neat what they're doing down there.
I always say, anything that doesn't get started at a school year with construction, wait till December vacation. That's when it's ready. But hopefully it's ready before then. All right, so looking at our accountability information, I just want to give you a kind of a snapshot of how this looked when I presented it to you last year. So last year, it was thirteen percent limited progress toward targets. So this year, you're looking at forty-seven percent moderate progress towards targets. So that's a really big gain. And then we moved to the fourteenth percentile to the thirteenth percentile. I know it, it's only one point, but in order to get to that point, a lot of work has to take place to get there. And once you have that momentum, then it becomes a little bit easier to, to grow even So this is just some, some of the growth. I won't go through every single thing here, but if you look at twenty twenty-three, you have fifteen percent and forty percent moving to twenty twenty-four, sixty-nine and sixty percent. And then overall, forty-seven percent moderate progress towards targets when comparing both sections from one year to the next.
I, I think the thing that you have to really highlight here is, if you look at this sixty-nine right there on the bottom, you can't see it, but it's in front of you, I think, that was fifteen last year.
What it, what is it?
Fifteen percent.
What is it? Mean?
Criterion reference target? It means.
It's everything together, yeah. It's like, so you'd have to, we'd probably have to spend another hour and a half together. But essentially, if you take all these categories here, from achievement, growth, high school completion, progress towards English language proficiency, and additional indicators, they set, so each year, the Department of Education will give you an accountability target. And they'll say, you performed here, we expect you to perform here. And if you meet that target, then you get the points. You can show growth, but not necessarily meet the target. It just depends where the target is. So in order to get those points, you have to hit those targets in those different areas, and they give you the points and it kind of gives you an overall score.
What was our main area of improvement within, within all of those categories that made us grow so, so greatly from fifteen percent to sixty-nine?
And that's a great question, Mayor. So we'll go through the full presentation, that'll break down the data, and that may, may help out a little bit.
Thank you.
All right, so you see the achievement ELA, so you see all students, we met the target, which is great. You know, there, there's definitely some areas to highlight that we still have to work on, there's still work to be done. But overall, within the achievement for ELA, we did meet the target. And then math as well, too. The path that we were put on, the recovery path, that accountability target, we did meet it, but we, we know that there are still areas to move. You know, there's some areas there where we improved below the target, but did improve. So stuff we have to go, things we got to go back to and keep working on to kind of keep that movement going. Can you still hear me if I go sideways?
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah.
I'm going to look terrible on TV, just going to get a side profile. Sorry. So science, we, we did improve below the target, but we did improve. We, we on a recovery path there. There are areas where we, we did meet the target as well. Definitely some more work to do in science, but there is some overall improvement and achievement for all students from one year to the next. ELA growth, so this is, we're looking at growth as opposed to just overall performance. Low growth, you know, we are making growth, but we definitely have to kind of dig back into that a little bit more. We do have the HMH curriculum that we just recently adopted, so we're thinking by using the HMH curriculum more and more, we're going to see further growth. Math as well, typical growth low, so we are making growth, which is great. I really attribute this to the, you know, the hard work in every department, just taking the time and PLCs, breaking down data, going through it, identify what interventions we have to have in place, what adjustments to practice we have to do. So again, moving on the right path, but, you know, some work to, to be done as well. So this is something to highlight. So when you look at, not that everything is, you know, an area to highlight, but looking at our access data, progress toward attaining English language proficiency, we exceeded the target. That means that we not only met it, but we exceeded it, which is a great thing. Now we just got to keep that up because, did I make a sound?
I don't know what that was.
Okay. Now DESI will start a new target of what we need to reach going into next year, and we'll just have to be able to meet that as well. But, I mean, that's a great change. So you're looking at all students at nine point five percent, moving into twenty twenty-four, fifteen point three percent. It's a five point eight change. So that, that's, that's really something to highlight and celebrate.
Is that a testing platform?
So access is the yearly test for English language proficiency. So that's for our English language learners to identify their growth in English language proficiency from one year to the next. Did I say that correctly?
Did. A plus.
Thank you.
Very well. Very well.
Two points for that.
Ooh, these are good.
I, I don't know how well I'm, I'm talking by seven fifty-eight at night, so if I say something wrong, just let me know. Chronic absenteeism. So I, I just want to say this, you know, it's, it's interesting, you've put in all this work the whole year, and then August, you say, you find this information out, and it's like, you did it. And that, that's great. What you don't see on this slide is the amount of phone calls, home visits, plans, time that, you know, our vice principals, all of our vice principals have taken to meet with families, come up with, you know, different class assignments, adjustments to practice, whatever it is to get students into the classroom. So we were able to exceed this target, which is great. There's still, there's still more work to do. You know, thirty-nine point three percent, you know, we want to get that even lower, of course. But that is a big change from, from one year to the next, dropping down chronic absenteeism by seven point nine percent.
Huge.
Great. So on the absenteeism chart, the negative numbers are the change. It's a good thing.
That's a good thing. Yeah, you, yeah, yeah.
The one you want to be negative there.
So basically, at about sixteen absences, you're considered chronically absent. So it looks at your whole student population and says, all right, this percentage of your student population is chronically absent. So the target that the state set for us was, so twenty twenty-three, we had forty-seven point two percent. And they said, okay, we want you to make forty-four point two percent. But these great people behind me said, nope, we want to do even better than that, and they made thirty-nine point three percent.
That's great. That's good.
And again, a four-year completion rate, we exceeded the target there, which is great. So there's a lot of great work to, to do there. There are some subgroups that did decline, so we need to go back and kind of dig in and see why. It isn't a huge decline, but that's okay. A decline's a decline, and we want to, want to take a look at that. So our extended engagement rate, this is an interesting chart. So this is for students that graduate in a five-year cohort. So these are students that don't make the four-year cohort, they make the five-year cohort. So this is an area where we do, you know, we have been, but sitting down and looking at students that are approaching senior year and they don't have the required credits maybe to graduate in that four year, or they have to come back for an MCAS. Making no change on that says, okay, we have to really look at that and to make sure our students, we want all our students to graduate in four years, but some of the students that are unable to, how are we making sure that those students are graduating with a high school diploma?
So ninety-three point six percent graduated in five years of this cohort?
Yeah, this cohort. That's, it's not like ninety-three point six percent of the whole population, yeah.
So back to the previous, the four-year complete.
Yep.
Completion rate. That includes obviously the grades, et cetera.
Yeah.
But also, that means ninety-five point six percent also passed the MCAS. Is that?
Yeah, so.
The state requirement as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Or in some cases, you'll do like an MCAS appeal. So if a student has taken the biology MCAS multiple times, passed the course, you can apply for an appeal. We don't do many appeals, but there is an option if you're, you're unable to, because testing can be difficult, you know, as, as we know. But we do have, you know, prep courses. We have biology connection classes, things like that, to support with the MCAS. And, and we, we kind of, we look at it together to see, okay, what, what do we need to look at? What are some of the difficulties our students are having and put the programming in to support that? And, okay, and you will drop off rates. So another area where we exceeded the target, our ultimate goal, obviously, is to graduate everybody that comes through the door. So we're in the class of twenty twenty-eight?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, sorry. So we're in the class of twenty twenty-eight. So our goal is for the students in twenty twenty-eight to graduate in four years. So in four years, they've graduated, they're moving on to career, college, vocational program, but something that's going to move them forward to the future. So again, we, we exceeded the.
Sorry.
No, no, you're good. I'm talking too much anyways.
No. Finish your thought, you're off.
No, that's, no, it's good. Thank you. Advanced coursework completion, we met the target here. So this is just a chart overall of students completing advanced coursework. And so our goals will pretty much remain the same. This is the last year of the school improvement plan, so we'll have the same overall five goals. I won't go through every, every one of them, but we want to have everyone having high access to high-quality curriculum, professional development that connects back to social emotional supports, as well as connects back to our school improvement plan, job better and professional development aligned to our SWF, continue to work with HR to support a diverse recruitment plan, and conducting audits connected to the district improvement plan and the school improvement plan. Part of what we're doing at ILT this year, we had an AIR DESI visit last year, and we really dug into that data to say, okay, how can we use this data to improve our practices as a school? And one of the areas we looked at ILT is, how do we look at our practices throughout the year and, and adjust them? So if something isn't working, like a specific way that we're providing instruction or a specific supplemental curriculum, how do we make that adjustment to, to kind of overall improve what we're doing? And then continue to engage students, families, and staff, create a welcoming environment, and overall increase engagement for our community with a focus on improving communication engagement of historically marginalized subgroups. Whenever you're ready.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. And the final slide for the night is, this is our, we, we have two big things that kind of run through our school improvement plan. So that's an instructional focus, and it's connected back to the district instructional focus, and that's that all Pittsburgh High School teachers will provide appropriately scaffolded instruction using high-quality instructional materials with critical thinking tasks, so that all students can demonstrate mastery of grade-level content through speaking and or writing. And then our school-wide expectation has remained the same for many years. All members of Pittsburgh High School will be present, positive, and prepared in order to think and communicate critically and effectively. So every morning, our seniors, members from our senior class do morning announcements. And before they end the morning announcements, they reflect back to our school-wide expectation. Am I missing anything?
Questions? Questions for Dr. Braga?
On the, on the dropout rate.
Yep.
That doesn't reflect students because their family moves to another district and they go to another school?
Not necessarily. What it could possibly mean is if a student was to, obviously like drop out, not go to high school.
Right.
If the student, depending on when the data is pulled, if the student goes to like another district and maybe doesn't stay there long enough, it could reflect back in our data. But for the most part, what you're looking at is students that have, maybe they've given up on high school. And there are some cases where like a student will join Job Corps, and, you know, that can be reflected in a overall dropout rate. But I would say the positive thing there is, is that the student is still on a pathway.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Knight?
Yes. Thank you so much, Principal Braga, Dr. Braga, and all of you for what you do for the students in the Pittsburgh Public School system. I do have a question, and you've got all the assistant principals here, or I guess all the folks that evaluate teachers, you know, happy teachers work harder, do the best they can, and we want to improve the academic performance of the students. Now, so that teachers can know exactly what the expectations are, you know, what can be done in order for the students to be able to learn best, are the teachers exposed to pre-observations before they get their evaluations, before you provide the feedbacks, so that they know exactly what you're looking for when you're going to evaluate them, so that they can improve their pedagogy?
That's a great question. So we, we keep teachers up to date through our weekly email. We also have ILT, and teachers serve on the ILT as well. And then when it comes to evaluations, we break the evaluations in a different department. So we meet with teachers. If we perform an observation, we have a post-meeting to talk about it. We kind of set the parameters of what we're looking for each year in terms of just teaching and learning. And it's all a build. There tends to be a tendency every time you go to a new year, it's like, okay, what's the next thing? And, and we want to avoid that. We want to take the great work that we're doing last year, we did last year, and bring it forward to what we're, we're working on this year.
Thank you.
See you.
So, back to the fifteen percent to the sixty-nine percent. So, you know, I saw the, the chronic absenteeism greatly improved, and that obviously is a direct correlation to improved outcomes for students. What are the other points that you would say, I don't know, a few points of things that you're doing really well that are clearly demonstrating the increases in exceeding these targets?
Yeah. I'll not open up to you guys, but. Pick one thing you think is going great. Come on up. Please.
I think we've made the school much, we've improved school safety a lot, so I would say that's a big change, and which changes the climate, changes the culture of the school. Kids want to be there more, and you're starting to see it.
I think that the supports that we've put at the school last year have greatly improved. So for instance, we have reading programs that are designed to help improve reading with students and give students an opportunity to perform better. So from a special education standpoint, I think we're doing a lot of the right things. We've made our programs, I think, really tight. We have, we have a number of programs at the high school, social-emotional program, our guided learning program, and we've really tightened those up. We have really good teams. And like John gives us the credit, I give the teachers the credit, they're the ones that are, that are doing the job. And I would agree with what Mr. Mazel, Rowdy was, Mr. Mazefel was saying, that making the school safe so that, so that teachers want to come to school and students want to come to school is, is critical. I mean, that's, that's what draws them in. And I think when, when Mayor, when you pointed to the absenteeism rate, I think that is what drives the absenteeism. When we, when we make it so that they want to be there, they're going to come. And I, I give credit, Dr. Braga doesn't take enough credit, but really he's the one that's spearheaded that and made the school a place where, where students want to come.
Something to what Mr. Menucci said and Mr. Mazefaro about school safety, we have, our hall monitors are our right hand. So Dr. Braga created a text line, so if teachers are having an issue, they could say, I'm having a cell phone issue, or I'm having something, you know, and they text it, we get on the walkie, and our hall monitors will go and address the situation. Those hall monitors build relationships with the kids, and they're a huge support system, and they're a huge support system us, because they're boots on the ground and kind of telling them, okay, it's okay. They have trust with them. But I think that has brought down disciplines a ton, because instead of a teacher just writing up an incident, they are validated instantly, because that's, you know, a situation's being handled within minutes. And I think that gives school safety and the teachers have that support, and I think they feel supported.
Thank you so much, Dr. My next question was going to be about how you're handling the cell phone there at the high school.
Yeah, it's a work in progress with the cell phones, as we know. So what we do is we do sweeps in the morning, then we do them in the afternoon, you know, to make sure that cell phones are away. And then we do have the text phone, text line as well, so if a teacher has a cell phone issue, we come and we support with that.
Rosemary?
Yeah, this is a question from the previous year, maybe the year previous to that as well. Are all the bathrooms open and accessible? And are you managing the decorum in the bathrooms?
Yeah, it's a good question, yeah, of course. You know, bathrooms, if they're not managed well, could be a dangerous place. So we have a bathroom on each floor, both open. We close the bathrooms during transition, that's when the students go to class, and then five minutes into the class and five minutes at the end, they're locked. But during the other times they're open, students sign in, they go to the bathroom. We don't allow cell phones in the bathroom. And it's kind of just a regular process, you sign in, you go, and you move on with your day. And we have monitors that are outside, like in a table and things like that, so if anything was to take place, there's somebody there that can support pretty well. So you know, I, this is my, this is year four as a principal, probably year 17 as a, or 18 as a educator, which I can't believe time has gone by that quick, but it's okay. So really, you know, presence, consistency, being available, and sometimes we've got to take on different hats. Like some days, you know, I have to be the person that walks through the hallways and does those things, or the team back here does that as well. So it's, we all kind of have to lend a hand and do the work to just maintain a nice environment. And beyond that, too, it's really getting to know the students, getting to know the things they like, they enjoy, you know, being at lunch, just kind of overall having a good time during the day, I think, is really helpful. And then obviously, you know, why do we do what we do to improve teaching and learning? That's the number one thing we have to keep in mind, is that we're working towards a goal of improvement, teaching and learning each day.
Thank you.
Something that struck me right away in thinking of increase in scores is also the importance you have with your instructional focus of scaffolding instruction.
Absolutely, yeah.
That students are coming in knowing that they're going to be able to access the curriculum.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's important.
Yeah, I agree. And again, it's, we want to continue to work on, especially our scaffolds and our individualized instruction. And for example, Wednesday is a half-day PD, and so what we're going to focus on is going to be pretty much teacher-driven. We're going to have an ESL teacher with a special education teacher, broken up into four groups, so we'll have four sets of ESL, special education teacher, and they'll be in probably groups of about 25 teachers. And what will go on there is, they will kind of show some scaffolds, both from the EL lens and the special education lens, answer any questions, teacher asking teacher questions about how to enhance and improve instruction for ELL students and special education students. And then the last part is to plan, to dig in the lesson and to plan based on these scaffolds to improve instruction for our specialized population. So, and that came out of our AIR DESI visit, time for general education teachers to meet with both ESL and special education teachers. So we wanted to utilize that time to make it meaningful, and really for that delivery to be, to be done by teachers.
Could we get a quick explanation of what a scaffold is?
It's a support to give students so they can access the curriculum, any type of support. So think about, maybe it's a graphic organizer.
Sentence stems.
Sentence stems, maybe it's a diagram to explain, or a picture to explain vocabulary words.
Could be the pace in which you talk as well, too.
Anything that makes it easier for kids to access the curriculum.
Modeling, body movement, just really depends on the situation. I mean, there's, there's so many
There's so many.
Resources around, like, you know, databases around scaffolds and different things like that. So that visit that we had gave us a wealth of data that, you know, we're still using now, so.
What visit was that again?
So that was an AIR DESI visit, and I cannot remember what AIR stands for, but basically they partner with the Department of Education, and they come to the school to do just an overview. You give them the list of classes, they go through it, you don't walk with them, you leave them alone, they take data, they come back and they say, this is what you did well in, this is where you need to improve. So what we did as an admin team is we created a spreadsheet, we went through each area, and then we kind of looked at the key words, made some key questions, and made some key action steps, and used that for our professional learning in the, in the summertime, and then used that to help drive our school improvement plan. And we'll continue to use that to drive our professional learning throughout the year. And the key, too, I think, is we don't want to necessarily be the ones always leading the way instructionally. We want it to really be as teacher-focused as it can be. So it's like, hey, this is the idea, let's collaboratively sit down and plan, and then really teachers beginning to lead that work, because that's when it really becomes rich and focused as well.
The mayor asked a question about scaffolding, and my concept prior to what you just said was that, I thought that was a consistency across the, across the city with different schools covering certain material, but you seem to have a, this scaffolding, you mentioned
No, it's a great question, Rosemary.
Emotion, I don't know, you mentioned several things, body position.
It's a fabulous question.
What is this? I don't, I've heard this before.
It's an excellent question. So scaffolds are good for all students, like all students can benefit from scaffolds, 100%, even if you're not an English language learner or a student with disabilities. They're great for students that may be below grade level, they're great for students that maybe, or, you know, myself, maybe I learn better when I hear, not, you know, visually when I see. With that said, for special education students and ELL students, there's different ways to support students to get to that grade-level curriculum. So adjusting that practice to reach those students may look a little bit different. And when we dig into the data, like we want to make sure that not just, you know, some of our overall populations are moving in a positive direction, but all, all of our students are. So you're right, I mean, very much it's for all students, but there could be some just slight adjustments. For example, if you're teaching ESL one class and you're teaching vocabulary, maybe there's a little more movement, maybe you highlight what you're saying, like, you know, hey, this says information, information, information. Information. And you say it a few times, repeat it, repeat back, and then it just catches on, and then maybe you have a picture next to it, you know, running, this picture of somebody running, so, not that we're giving a class tonight, okay.
That was very good.
How do you do running again?
Body language, body language and verbal.
I just want to say congratulations to all of you, you're doing a really great job. Whenever we're together, I feel like this team is extremely transparent, vulnerable, you know, I think when we're working in teams and really doing learning walks, it really, it does feel like a learning walk, so congrats.
Thank you.
Congrats to everyone at the Pittsburgh High School, it takes a village. I know the teachers are behind you, the paraprofessionals, all staff members, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, how we doing?
Doing great.
Everyone's hanging in there?
We have district accountability, so we have more data.
You save the best for last.
You sure you don't want to stay for the last presentation?
I expect you back at seven o'clock, about six o'clock tomorrow, please, 6:00 AM.
I get up in the morning and I go from six to seven.
All right, last long presentation, and I can move into the next piece. So in front of you, I gave to you a presentation with these slides on it, there are three slides missing, because I wanted to add some more information over the weekend, so I will get those to you, but you'll see the three that are missing in the presentation tonight. So as you know, our MCAS results came out on September 24th, the state released them to the public. We've had access to this data internally about the first week of August. So we've been busy examining the data, making changes to our school improvement plans, our school-wide instructional focus, and the district's focus for this year. So we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes ever since we received the data back in August. So tonight, you've already heard from two of our schools. I'm going to talk about tonight the district-level data, that's all our schools together, and let you know where we are accountability-wise. Our next meeting on October 21st, the two middle schools, Memorial and Longsjo will be here to present, and also Goodrich. And then the final presentation is on November 4th with all three elementary schools, okay? So also in front of you in your packets, you do have all this information, you have all the presentations for this evening, and then you actually have the large school improvement plans for each school. They summarized it for you in one slide, but these are probably like 15 to 20 pages for you to read when you have time to get into that and for more details on exactly what they're doing. Okay, sorry. That being said, where are we as a state? So this is the state-level data, and some three quick bullets kind of summarizing all the state's data. So overall, for English Language Arts, the results show lower achievement in all grades from the year before, from 2023. So overall, there was low achievement, okay? We didn't see many gains statewide. In math, the results showed improvement in third grade amongst relatively flat results in most grades. So third grade actually showed some improvement, so we matched that trend here in Pittsburgh, but the other grades pretty much flat overall. And then for science, at the state level, it showed improvement in achievement in grades five and 10, and lower achievement in grade eight. So again, that's a summary of the state results at the state level. And then we have been looking at the data at the district level, and we put together a few points of some improvement that we saw, and we wanted to share that with you. So overall, in ELA, our achievement is flat for grades three to eight, so we're pretty much the same as the year before, and Glenda will go into more detail about that in a second. And then our ELA results for the high school level showed some slight improvements, as you heard from Dr. Braga. Math achievement, like I said, we do follow the state trend. We improved in math from last year at 27%, meeting or exceeding expectations, to this year at 36% meeting or exceeding expectations. In science, our achievement shows improvement in, of 2% in meeting or in exceeding expectation categories, but we wanted to share, most importantly, we saw a decline in students not meeting that lowest tier from 30% last year to 22% this year. So we saw a decline of those students who were not meeting, which is positive. And then the last two, at Pittsburgh High and Crocker, there's something called an annual criterion reference target. That's fancy way of saying how they did in all the areas that they, they look at, whether it's achievement, growth, chronic absenteeism, ESL scores, the graduation rate for the high school, all those pieces that we just heard about. At Pittsburgh High, like I said, they went from 15 in 2023 to 69 last year, which is great. And then for Crocker Elementary School, they went from 53% in 2023 up to 71%. So those are just a few highlights showing where we are here in the district, and some really positives, okay? So that being said, and I apologize, these numbers are small, but you do have this in front of you, this is the accountability. So every year, our schools at the elementary, middle, and high school level are given an accountability rating, which shows their rating compared to schools in a similar grade span like theirs, okay? So elementary, middle, and high school are all rated together. So that being said, this year we still have two schools that are in the bottom 10% like last year, that's both McKay and Longsjo. They continue to still be in the bottom 10%. That means that the school gets a little bit more additional funding from the state that allows us to work with the statewide system of support, that brings in supports from the state level to help us turn these two schools around. So we'll continue to work with them at Longsjo and McKay for this coming school year. And that being said, tonight, you'll see there's a grant that we received for $50,000 to help these two schools improve, which we're asking you to accept for this evening. But that being said, just a quick rundown of where we're at. For Longsjo, last year we were at 6%, this year at 5%, we decreased by one. At Crocker Elementary School, they were at 34% last year, this year they're at 32, they decreased by 2% percentage points. At Pittsburgh High, they went from 13 to 14%, they increased by one. McKay Elementary School, they are still at 6%, they didn't have any movement. At Ringle, I'm sorry, at Memorial, they decreased by 1% from 33% to 32%. And then our biggest decrease that we saw throughout the district was at Ringle Elementary School, they went from 33% last year to 24%, which was about a 9% decrease. So that's our overall accountability rating for our schools moving into this school year, okay?
So requiring assistance or intervention, does that mean that the state provides us with additional
Yes.
Support?
Additional support that comes in monthly, actually probably more than monthly, probably twice a month to the state, comes in and provides us support at the, at the district level, and also at the school level. And then we get that $50,000 in additional funding for these two schools to, to support the work there.
Question?
Yes, on the, on Goodrich and Early Learning Center, insufficient data, they just, they don't take the
So Goodrich, you have to have at least 20 or more students to get reporting data, they only have 14 that took the MCAS test, and then South Street doesn't test because they're in kindergarten.
Okay, that's a good question.
Yep.
Why so few take the MCAS at Goodrich?
Because typically, we don't accept students at Goodrich until junior year, so many kids have either already passed the MCAS or need one or two tests to pass coming into there, so we don't have a large group that needs to, needs to take the test. Okay, good questions. So what's that mean for the district? So overall, again, we're not requiring any intervention or assistance at the district level, and we made, according to the state, substantial progress toward our targets. And we have a score of 52%, up from 51% last year, so we did make a 1% gain, okay? But overall, our district isn't receiving any support at the district level from the state, okay? So that being said, points awarded here. So if you look here, this is kind of our report card at the, at the district level. So on the left, you can see that line in the middle, you can probably see it better in front of you, there's two ways to calculate our overall percentage or criterion reference target, and that is looking at our grades, three to eight schools, which is on the left, for all students and our lowest-performing students. So what it does is it takes our all students, every student that took the assessment, and it gives them a score of achievement, growth, and progress toward attaining English language proficiency and chronic absenteeism. So it takes all that, it looks at all our school, our students, and assigns us a point, zero, one, two, three, or four. Zero means that we declined, one means there was no change, two means improved, three means met target, and then four means exceeded target, okay? So you'll see those on the left for all students, and then they also look at your lowest-performing students, the bottom 25% of students tested in your building. Those are the students who they look at for the lowest performing. And what they do is they score you based on your achievement, growth, And what they do is they score you based on your achievement, growth, English language proficiency, and chronic absenteeism at the elementary and middle school level. That's on the left. So as you can see, for achievement, for ELA, we didn't receive any points. We have 0 out of 4 for all students. But when you look to the right, for our lowest performing students, we received 2 out of 4 points, which means we improved. Same thing for math. We received 2 out of 4 points, meaning we improved for math achievement for all students. And then for the lowest performing students, we received 4 out of 4. We exceeded that target. And then last but not least, for our science achievement in grades five and eight, we declined, we received no points. And then we did the, because I think because of the test is so new, they don't look at the lowest performing students for that, for science achievement. So if you look at that, that's how they calculated the achievement total there. Same thing for growth. So they looked at growth for our all students and lowest performing students. We got 2 out of 4 in all categories, meaning we did improve.
And no science for the same.
And then no science for the same level there. And then English language proficiency at the elementary and middle school levels, we declined, we received 0 out of 4 points. And then for our additional coursework for chronic absenteeism at the elementary and middle school, we exceeded our chronic absenteeism target. So we got, we exceeded those targets. So looking at those, and you can see how it's weighted. So beginning, they take those two scores, and then that's what gives us the 48%. The weight of non-high school results are 70%. So then if you look at the right, they did the same thing now for the high school. Again, all students, lowest performing students. For our achievement, for English, we had 3 out of 4, meaning we met our target. For all students, 4 out of 4. We exceeded our target for our lowest performing. Math, we only, we had no change. There wasn't a significant change, so we only got 1 point. For all students, for our lowest performing students, we got 2 out of 4, which was improved. And then same thing for science. We don't have it for lowest performing, but we received 2 out of 4 for science for all students, which means we improved. The growth, we only received 1 point. So there was not really a change for both all students and lowest performing. And for mathematics, for all students and lowest performing, we received 2 points, which means improved. And then you can actually go down, and Dr. Braga talked about this, the four-year cohort, the extended engagement rate, and the annual dropout rate for all students. We received 3 out of 4, which means we met target. 0 out of 4 for extended engagement rate. We have work to do on there. We declined. And then 4 out of 4 for annual dropout rate, we exceeded. We have the English language proficiency there for the high school, and that was exceeded target, 4 out of 4. Chronic absenteeism, for both all students and lowest performing, we're 4 out of 4. We exceeded target. And then for advanced coursework, we received 2 out of 4 for all students. So you can see we have two final averages there, 54%, 67%, which is a total of 61%. And they take those two together to give us our referenced criterion reference target of 52%. Okay? I know that was a lot.
I have a question. May I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
All of these stats, are they vis-à-vis other school districts in the state? Or do they also include vis-à-vis our own report last year?
So this report that I just reported out on is just Fitchburg?
Just Fitchburg.
Just Fitchburg here. Every school gets this report. Every district gets a report like this.
Every district gets their own.
Yes, but this is Fitchburg.
This shows us nothing about our status in the state.
No, it does not. This just shows right here how our students did at the elementary, middle, and high school level.
Against ourselves or amongst ourselves?
Yes, our targets. Yes. Yep. And then in the report, I put this in there so you knew what some of the terms mean. If you do go into the DESE website, you can click on Fitchburg, and it gives you a more detailed report to all the terms that they use here. If you would like some reading before you go to bed, there's probably a book list that talks about all the terms. You can download that and look at that. But this should help you read the slide that I just went over before.
I think I'll just call you if I want to.
I will be more than happy to sit with you to talk to you. All right. That being said, I'm going to hand it over to Glenda, and she's going to go into the more detailed reports.
Excellent. Actually, if you don't mind, can you go to Slide 13? Because I think it would be really helpful to set a little bit of, thank you, some background just before we actually get started. As you are aware, and as has been mentioned tonight, you know, one of the things that is really important and that does impact data, hopefully in the positive in the long run, is implementation. We happen to have three different implementations in our district at the moment, which is an amazing thing. That means we have access to high-quality resource. But I do want everyone to understand that there is a process to implementation, and during implementation, it is not unique or atypical for there to be in the implementation process. Some, you know, regression in data, because we are learning a new curriculum, and really, that takes time for people to develop an understanding of what that new pedagogy is. So I put this on here because this is actually research-based and actually comes from DESI. This comes right from their website. And I thought it was important for us to share as we go into data. So we can go back to Slide 8, but you have access to that slide as well. All right. I'm going to talk a little bit more in depth about our elementary and our middle school because Dr. Braga was so great in sharing all of the high school data. You've already looked at all of it. On this slide, there is actually both. The high school is at the bottom. But again, I'm going to focus the next few slides primarily on the data that we haven't seen yet. So in terms of ELA achievement, one of the things I want to share is that, you know, in elementary and middle school, the data overall remained within 2.7 points, either above target and no more than 2.7 points also below target. So I just, I think that's an important piece to highlight. You know, our lowest performing subgroups improved with a 2.7 increase. So I think that we're going to see that pattern a lot with some of our subgroups, especially the subgroups who seem to have more supports with things such as Title I interventions. You will see an increase in that. We have no change noted. That means there wasn't a decrease, but there also wasn't an increase to our data for our L and former L students, our African-American and Black subgroups, and also students with disability subgroup. So you'll see there was no change with their data. There was a decline in our subgroups for high-needs, low-income, multirace, and our white subgroup. So that just highlights right now our ELA data. We can move on to the next slide. And I'll just share that the high school met and exceeded targets for most subgroups for the ELA. Moving on to math achievement, elementary and middle school improved in most subgroup areas. Our lowest performing subgroup, again, these are the subgroups who typically do receive additional support on top of the Tier 1 instruction. So this subgroup exceeded target with 5 points above what our target was in 2023. The subgroups that we've noticed a decline for are our Asian, multirace, and white subgroups. And then high school improved or exceeded targets for most subgroups. Again, we're talking achievement. When we talk about growth, we will be discussing growth across the board in most of our content areas. For science, in elementary and middle school, there was, you know, decline data overall by 2.3 points in most subgroups. There's definitely an opportunity to gather some more data around elementary and middle school science, particularly in our multirace, African-American, and Black, Asian subgroups. These particular subgroups actually declined more than 3 points. So I think it is definitely an area of interest to kind of figure out why. And so I'll also add that specifically for our high school in the science area, there was either improvement or exceeded targets for most of our subgroups. Okay. So now we're looking at student growth percentile. And, you know, I think one of the things to highlight is that if you don't, if you don't see an increase in achievement and you also don't see an increase in student growth, you know, that is concerning. But one of the things that I will share is that, you know, we are actually showing typical growth in all areas. So you'll see that here for our ELA. Specifically, some of the groups that I had mentioned earlier for not showing growth and achievement, these same groups are actually listed here as having high growth. Okay? So that is something that I think is really important to highlight. So the subgroups that I had shared before are Asian and our African-American and Black subgroups. They have high growth. So even though in the achievement, it didn't show that there were, was an increase, there is a larger growth in these particular groups. And then high school made low to typical growth, as was shared before.
May I interrupt? I will forget my question.
Sure.
How can there be one stat that shows no growth, but then there's actually high growth? What's happening there? The statement you just made prior to...
Yeah, absolutely. So in their achievement data, right? So that's how the students actually score. So their overall average score declined. Right? So taking the test, the actual score, the overall score declined in that particular area. However, the growth, so the improvement that the students have made from their previous score to this year is actually high growth in those subgroups. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So that's what I was asking before. This is as put up beside last year's stats.
Right. So in terms of that grade level for that year, right? Those students, the achievement may have been lower. But when we're talking about growth, so how those students did the year before to how they're doing in the incoming year, those students have actually had a higher growth.
A new set of seventh graders, I'm making this up. New are the seventh graders that were last year. We're watching them now at the eighth grade, and they...
Exactly. It's the growth that they've made from their previous years. Yep.
So there's facts hidden in the facts or the numbers that is presented, which...
Yeah. So what's great about this data is that we're looking at how the students are, kind of going back to your statement, how they're faring against themselves from previous years. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification rather than the new set of seventh graders.
Exactly. Exactly. That's what the growth, that's the difference between the achievement and the growth. Sorry, we are on math. So math, student growth, again, here is in elementary and middle school, they made typical growth in all areas. And then, again, some of our subgroups that may have fared a little bit lower in the achievement, their subgroups have shown high growth. So those subgroups are our L and former L, our Asian students, and our African-American and Black subgroups. So again, against their previous growth, they have made a high growth. Yeah. John did speak a little bit about this. The one thing I could share is, you know, I was fortunate to sit with Emma Bressard, and she meets regularly with our curriculum team. She just really wanted to emphasize that some of the reasons for, you know, improving or exceeding a lot of these targets are just a variety of offerings to college and career pathways where they actively engage students. And also in the high school, and, you know, John didn't get to share this, but there are a lot of programs that prepare students for not only continued academic success, but for life after high school if they choose to move toward career readiness, as we noticed through the MVP program that John did speak about. You know? And we also have the innovation pathways. So all of these things, you know, she wanted to really enforce is part of the reason why the graduation, extended engagement, and annual dropout rate has shown some successes over the years. So I definitely wanted to make sure to touch upon this because, you know, we did show a decline. I'm extremely happy that there's an increase in the language proficiency at the high school. Elementary through middle school, there is opportunity for us to focus on language proficiency supports for our English learners because there was a significant, you know, decline. And I think it's really important for us to acknowledge and really think about those next steps, which John will be, you know, sharing in one of our upcoming slides. Chronic absenteeism, we spoke about this at the high school level, but in terms of our district-wide for elementary and middle school, these have exceeded and improved targets across the board. So this goes all the way from elementary all the way up to high school. This is really great data.
This is our best, our best chart.
Best ever.
Yes.
Still a lot of work to do, though.
Yep.
John already shared the advanced workshop completion, so I'm not going to pause on here because I think he did a great job just talking about this. And I think we can move forward on some of our next steps.
Absolutely. So if you remember, back in the spring, I presented to you our vertical alignment strategy that outlined exactly what we're going to be working on this year and made it clear what administrators were going to do, what teachers were going to do, what support staff were going to do. So that vertical alignment strategy is there. I'll send you this tonight so you can actually dive into that in a little bit more detail. But just some highlights of the work that we're doing this year to help improve student achievement. So over the summer, administrators at each school came together, and they looked at our district priority. And what we made them do is to make sure their, all their work at the district level, sorry, all their work at the school level was aligned to the work that we're doing at the district level. So what we really wanted to do is to make sure that we had clear direction in what the work the district is doing right down to the school level. So if you look at these plans, we have a district goal that aligns to our school goals. And then it actually even goes further now to align to all the teachers, administrators, professional goals, and student goals for this year. So we're trying to make everything aligned together so it's not another thing that we're working on. On top of that, we also had all our schools' leadership teams, in addition to their ILTs, plan what their professional development was going to look like in the summer, beginning in August, all the way to June. Obviously, there's a lot of time in between and things can change, but they have a skeleton of what their professional development needs to support student learning and also to support their teachers. So every school right now has a clear outline of what their PD will look like on early release days, full release days, during ILT times, during grade level meetings times, during PLC. Everything is there outlined. And then work that we did to support student learning at the school level is working with our administrators. We went back and re-did a book study over the summer. We all read a book called Data Wise or System Wise, two books, but they are the same thing. We read this book that actually helped us look at better, I'm sorry, look at data better. So what this did was it actually helped us approach how to work with our teachers to look at data. We did this work at... We did this work at the district level with our administrators over the summer. We modeled for them what meetings would look like with their teachers, and now they're going back in to do exactly what we did with them with their teachers and their instructional leadership teams. So that's something that we're really proud of and seems to be going, you know, excellent so far. And then the other piece that we did was we're making sure that we are modeling and planning each portion of the data cycle, making sure that everyone understands exactly what each step means so we can look at data better and to make better decisions for our students in return so they can make better gains. We also, we talked a little bit about this. We are looking at our professional learning community cycle of planning and what that looks like. And then the last piece that we're doing is we have a district ILT team, which is the first time we've ever done this. That's going to actually help us stay, it's going to make us look at the data more frequently and more closely so we can help make better decisions with our schools. So we're going to be participating in the ILT cycle at the district level once a month, just like what's happening at our school level.
Superintendent Thompson, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Mr. Corio, the union rep, mentioned that this didn't get approved, but do you have, they have to approve this before you can use?
Yeah, I think there might be a misunderstanding in that. So right now, we are doing that. It's very similar to what teachers have been doing in the past during PLCs. They work together to plan, and then they look at data. So this is just making it illustrative and making it clear about what each week looks This is news to me that they need to be collectively bargained because we are doing this in a lot of places throughout the district. So that's something that we'll bring back up when negotiations come back up on Thursday.
And that is an administrative time, so, you know, administrators, that is an administratively-led time, so administrators can actually create PLC in a way that best impacts teachers, so.
I'd just, I'll be quick, but I just want to make sure that we don't fall into the trap to think that all of this is comprehensive of all of the humanity that we're dealing with. There's so many other factors that I see aren't included in there, like what if you took data on people that were in the arts, the theater? How do they score? Do they score higher because of their active engagement in schools? How about people that work? I mean, this is a form of data, but it's not.
I super appreciate that and totally agree with you.
Right.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Because we could psychologically fall into that.
This is one point, right?
Yes, absolutely.
This is one assessment, right?
And then the other.
Kids are more than this, and we know that.
Far more.
Far more than this.
But this is the start. But if you think a few years ago, we wouldn't even have used the word data in our vocabulary. It would have been other things. Second point, is everything that you're saying tonight going to be a help to me and to the listening audience as to how to vote on the election about MCAS?
Question two. You know, you'll have to make your own educated decision.
I know, but I mean, what is it that you're?
Yeah, so, you know, MCAS is one measure, okay?
And all of this has been dealing with.
And I'll be honest with you, right now, there is a question two out there that talks about dropping MCAS, right?
Dropping the graduation required.
Dropping MCAS and the graduation requirement, yes. That being said, they haven't clearly outlined, and this is my opinion, this is John Thompson voting on his own.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
My opinion.
If we can't ask.
They haven't made it clear what the measure is going to be. So before I can move forward and make a clear decision, I would like to know exactly what that requirement will be moving forward before we completely throw MCAS out and eliminate it.
So as an educated person, you realize that some things aren't being spoken of or.
Correct.
Other realities, which the ordinary person might not realize, that they might just boil it down to, is it pressure or is it unproductive or not pressure?
My question is, what is it going to be then? Because we have to have some type of measure, right? What is it?
Per federal guidelines.
Per federal guidelines. Who knows?
What did you say that last?
Federal guidelines. They require us to have an assessment.
I still didn't get you, something on guidelines?
Federal guidelines.
Oh, federal.
Federal guidelines require us to have an assessment.
Oh.
So the state has to come up with, if no MCAS, what is it going to be?
Yeah, okay. Right now, it's not just statewide, it's nationwide, you know? Every state have their.
Yes.
Their assessment requirements. I mean, you know, you look at Texas, they got the tax, the Texas Assessment Analysis Skills. And then DC, the DC CAS, the District of Columbia Comprehensive Assessment System and so forth. So everybody have the, I don't know when they're going to change it if they are, but everybody has an assessment that needs to be.
But I mean, I think it's a service to the people to.
Jim.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Jim.
Just for clarification, nationwide, there must be an assessment. Nationwide doesn't mean the assessment does determine whether or not you graduate from high school.
That's correct.
That's correct, yes.
So, and in my understanding with question two, if it does away with MCAS as a graduation requirement, MCAS could still be a test that's given every year to.
Correct, right. But what will be that measure?
The measure.
That will have? Who knows? They haven't said that yet, so. All right. Any questions on the data I just presented?
I just had a question about the district-level ILT.
Yes.
Is it made up of people that are sitting on school ILTs now, or how is that?
Yeah, so the district ILT, we do a little, so right now, our state requires us, the state, the SSOS team requires us as a district to have a really intense focus on one grade span, on one content area. So looking at all our data, what we decided to do was focus on middle school math, grade six to eight. So that is our goal that's being monitored with our SSOS partners and the work that we're doing with this district ILT. So everyone that's made up of our district ILT is either a middle school administrator. We have some teachers on that ILT team. We also have some SPSAs, and I'm missing someone else. We have our math coaches. Who else am I missing?
The math director.
Math director, sped director, ESL director. Yep.
And us.
And us.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions on this? All right. If you do have a question and you want to get ahold of me, please do so. Be more than happy to sit down and go in greater detail with you on this. All right, moving forward here, I just wanted to quickly add, it was the last piece on the agenda, was the Crocker Field rededication this past Friday night. It was a wonderful event. I just wanted to thank everyone who came out and everyone who donated to, over the last 20 years, donated to, you know, the revitalization of Crocker Field. Thank you so much. It's such an honor, an honor to have this field and our community and have it up to date for our students. So just thank you, everyone, and thank you, everyone who came out on Friday night. Yes, Jim?
I just want to add to that, you all may remember, Mr. Ed Gaston Gay came to us to name the track after Erky Guten and Chris Woods. And before the ceremony began, we walked down to the old shot put area at Crocker Field. And that monument is there now, and there'll be a formal dedication, Mr. Gaston Gay said, sometime in the spring.
In the spring, yeah. We were trying to get it at the same time as this, but we just didn't have enough time.
You did a very nice job, too, on the monument.
Along with that, Jeremy, that might be some, we would like to get some of the trees around the monument trimmed.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it kind of hung down over it.
Sure.
So if we could get some trimming around that monument.
Yep, that'd be good. Okay, we'll get that on.
Field looks nice.
Yeah, it does. It's great. Thank you, everyone.
Is that on video? Can it be read?
Yeah, there must. Have they released that yet?
Yep.
They released that, it's on FATV.
It's not shared.
Is it shared?
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to run through quickly the budget items. We're moving on here. So budget items, we have one donation for Colonial West Chevy in the amount of $1,000 from the Colonial West Chevy for $1,000 to support the Fitchburg High School football to be used for the uniform pants. And then we have three grants to submit. The first grant is Partnership for Reading Success in the amount of $20,300. The second one is the Reliant Foundation Community Grant in the amount of $25,370. And the last one is the Multilingual Newcomer and Homeless Support Grant in the amount of $50,000. So those three we would like to submit. And the last one to accept is the, I told you about this earlier, it's the additional monies for McKay and Longchamp from the DESE called the Targeted Assistance Grant to support work at that school. Okay? And I think that's all for the budget items. And then the last piece here, which you have in front of you, I won't go into a lot of detail unless you'd like me to, but on August 1st, 2024, this is the policy number 4105, the non-discrimination and harassment policy. And Debbie, please piggyback off me if you want to add anything. On August 1st, they updated all the Title IX regulations, which talk about non-discrimination and harassment. Because those were updated on August 1st, 2024, we had to update our non-discrimination and harassment policy to meet the regulations. So that's why we're asking for approval of this policy this evening. Just a quick thing to mention, the biggest pieces that have changed around the grievance is the grievance procedures around non-discrimination and harassment in Title IX. And then the whole responsibility of who can be a coordinator and the processes that they need to follow. So that talks about that in the non-discrimination and harassment. This came directly from our attorney. So this is something, he said we have to have an update, so that's before you tonight.
I think we all received that from MASC.
Yes.
Of this, so.
Who is the compliance officer?
For Fitchburg?
For Fitchburg and the district Title IX coordinator?
Yep, so we have two of them. Glenda Cologne is for staff members, and then, I'm sorry, no, sorry. Glenda Cologne is for students, and then Kerry Fabali, our HR director, is for staff members.
I can understand, geez, I don't mean to step on anyone's toe, but I can understand Ms. Cologne being the person for the students, you know, because she's, you know, diverse young lady. But don't you find it strange to have a Caucasian person as the representative for this type of policy?
For our staff members? I do not.
She's HR.
She's our HR director.
She's our HR person, so.
Non-discrimination and harassment, it's everybody.
It just seemed like, you know, something that, you know, you should have a person, you know, that diverse background, you know, to be able to cover, you know, everything, you know? That's my take on that. Also, another question. So when you send out letters to home and policies and so forth, different things materially sent home, do you put this type of information somewhere in a paper so that parents can be aware that this is the new policy that, you know, that you're adopting?
That this right here, so whenever, so what we have, so this is the policy, but what we have to do, if we get a Title IX report, there's a whole process, and it's like 190 pages, that we receive from our attorney that actually tells us how to investigate and what to do through this whole process. So whenever there's a Title IX complaint made, we actually have to notify them about what's happening and exactly what the process and procedure is. So anyone that makes that complaint, we automatically do this type of investigation, and we have to give them all the materials that go along with this so they know what their rights are.
So how do we know what the procedures are that will be followed if someone came to Ms. Cologne, for example, a student came and said, you know, I was discriminated at, I am a student with disability, and they didn't want me to participate in female basketball team. What would be the process, the procedure that would be taken in order to address this?
Most of the procedure happens at the school level. I'm the coordinator, so I'm the direct contact and advisor to people who are completing investigation to make sure that that process is being followed through. So typically, what happens is I'm informed that a Title IX investigation is going to open up. We kind of solidify and check in with what the steps are. That includes thorough investigation of the process, student interviews within the process, and then determination from somebody who is appointed the person who makes the deciding decision on the case, and that is someone who was not part of the investigation process at all. So it's someone who has an unbiased view and is only looking at the scenario through, you know, a new lens, right? From there, that person contacts me, lets me know kind of the updated information on what the results were. And then in some cases, we have to create safety plans or there are next steps along that process. Part of that process also includes communication, as John said, with families, both at the start of the investigation and at the end of the investigation with.
But are these steps in writing someplace so that people can see them? Is it on the website so that?
We actually just received our updated copy yesterday? Is it yesterday?
What, the updated copy of this policy or the steps that would be taken?
The process. So I have a 97-page document that I can share with you.
97?
Yep.
Oh, wow.
It's about Title IX, the process, on what we have to follow. And then I have another, looks like another.
I feel bad for Ms. Cologne. Now, you're going to have time to go through 97 pages to be able to address this?
This is the law, we have to do that.
I have to?
Yep, we have to.
Can you forward that to me, too?
Yep, I can send it to you. I can send you all these.
Is there a phone number that, you know, you can place online for the parents to be able to see, or students to know, well, if they're having a problem with, you know, discrimination of some type or some type of harassment, they can call this particular number? I didn't see any here, so that's what I'm asking.
So we've got to remember that whenever I come with a policy, a policy is a policy that we have to follow. The process and procedures is what we develop.
Right.
As a school system at the admin level.
Okay.
So I can share with you this entire process. By law, Dr. Knight also requires us to have a spot for this on our website, and we have a spot for that, and it tells them exactly what they need to do to make a complaint.
Okay.
So that is on our website.
All right, thank you.
But I'll share all this with you.
I think her question, though, was specifically, do you send information home to the students however, however you may do that?
So yeah, so if somebody makes a complaint that falls under Title IX, we automatically have to alert them that it's a Title IX complaint, and we have materials that.
Yeah, but you're saying just generally, if, I don't know, how would you word that?
Well, I said that, I asked that, whenever you send out flyers or, you know, some type of information to the parents with the students, you know, if you have this policy written somewhere there so that they know, you know, if they're having a problem, they, you know, who they can.
Notifying the students rather than saying it's.
So each school has their own, so each school has their own set of designated people. We wouldn't put it on the policy because the people can change every year. So every school has their own process that is set. The high school process is not necessarily the same process that you do in elementary. High school has quite a few different resources. They have individual staff members that they can connect to, guidance, they have the Stop It app. There's an unlimited amount, and those are all both on their website and on their student handbook. So, you know, so that process looks a little bit different per grade band, but you wouldn't designate specific names on there for a policy that could last more than a year, right? So that's why that policy is very different than procedure. Procedure is where we do update that yearly, and, you know, there are designated staff members that are shared, and those things are available for families. Like I said, both on the handbook, the students have the resources, and the high school website has a wealth of information on there.
Okay, just a suggestion, you know? Okay, just a suggestion, you know, maybe this is something could be done. Is there any way that we could, that, you know, you could have an additional person to just having one person that deals with the students if they're having a problem? You know, have two different people on that team, if you will. And, you know, I'm just looking at a student that, you know, for example, you know, is having, you know, maybe a Hispanic student that is having some type of problem with harassment, you know, they may not feel 100% comfortable to just go to, you know, a person that is, you know, a Caucasian to complain about that. But if they saw an African-American representative, okay, I would rather speak with them. I'm just saying so that students can feel comfortable, you know, when they report these issues that they may be encountering, because we do want to make sure these get addressed, right?
Yeah, absolutely. All educators in schools, people of color or, you know, or Caucasian or white, you know, educators, they are all responsible for the well-being of our students. And so I just want to respond.
I didn't say no, but I'm just saying how the students.
No, I just want to respond before you say anything else. So what I'm saying is every single student, one of the things that has been happening in our district is, and I think our director of SCL spoke about this both this year, oh no, last year, is that everyone does designate or really think about who is a trusted adult in their building. That really is part of the culture that is being built in Pittsburgh. So if somebody feels that a trusted adult is a person of color, then, you know, all students can go to that trusted adult. So that is definitely the culture and norm. So I appreciate the feedback. That is definitely something that is happening, I would say, in most of our schools.
So I just sent you all the documents, so please take a look. And if you want to add this to a subcommittee or if you want to have a larger discussion about this, we definitely can. So just let me know. All right, I think we are all set. Mayor, I'm going to turn it back over to you. I think that was my last piece.
All right, great. So we have before us 24-421 through 24-424. If we would like a motion to.
Make a motion to bundle action items 24-421 through 24-424.
Second.
Motion and second to bundle the remaining action items. Any comments or questions? All in approval.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have the bundle before us.
Make a motion to approve the bundle.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the bundle. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, in that bundle, there was another document, I'm sorry, that superintendent had asked us to read. Is that included in that? I didn't get that. I don't want to.
Is that the contract negotiations, Dr. Knight?
Yes.
We're going to talk about that in executive session.
Okay, so that's not part of the, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Aye.
Any further questions or comments on the bundle? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. The action items, remaining action items are all approved. We have next on our agenda, other business. We have no other business. So next, we will move into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations. The Nutrition Services Unit.
We'll make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second. We have a motion and second to move into executive session, after which point we will reconvene in a public session.
We need.
Yeah, this will require a roll call vote.
All right, taking the roll call vote to go into executive session. Mayor Squalia?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeffries?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that is unanimous. We are now moving into executive session. All right, thank you. We are back in open session.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So in executive session, we reviewed the CAF managers' contract and the CAF workers' contract, and both were unanimously passed, six yeses to zero nos.
All right.
All right?
Okay, next on the agenda is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. I will take this by unanimous consent. We are adjourned.